All right, Mr. Preston.
Counsel will now move to come out of closed session and counsel certifies, comes out of closed session and certifies that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Yes, I move that we come out of closed session for reasons stated by the city attorney.
Councilor Myers?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Is there any discussion?
To come on the closed session?
For the reasons stated, yes, sir. Because I disagree with the accuracy of what was stated. And I'll go further.
He's entitled to vote no, but it's a four vote.
In my view, the negotiating position of the city would not have been harmed by the discussion I heard in public, in private session, in closed session. And I brought this to the attention of other members of council and the discussion continued. So, in my view, we violated the Freedom of Information Act.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
No.
Councilmember Smith, please?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Perin?
Aye.
When out of closed session. The next, oh. Okay, now we'll have the positive Petersburg story by Mayor Perin.
Good evening again for tonight's positive Petersburg story. I would like to formally thank all of those who stepped in to provide support during the fire on High Street today. With assistance from our neighboring communities and Petersburg community partners, the fire was successfully contained and displaced residents were promptly cared for. I would like to extend a major thank you to our Petersburg Fire Department for their active response and tenacity throughout the day. And also, thank you to Denwoodie County, the City of Colonial Heights, Chesterfield County, Fort Lee, the City of Hopewell, Prince George County, and the City of Richmond for their support of our fire team today. I would also like to thank the following departments and organizations for their help throughout the event today. The American Red Cross of Virginia, the Petersburg Public Works, Petersburg Public Utilities, and all of my fellow council members and Petersburg city staff who provided support. Thank you again to everyone who united during this very trying time. Thank you, everyone.
Can I please have everyone to join me for the moment of silence? Can I please have everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item six, determination of the presence of a quorum. We have a quorum. Item seven, proclamations and recognitions. Item eight, a certificate of recognition for Sheriff Vanessa Crawford.
Sheriff Vanessa R. Crawford was sworn in as the first female sheriff for the city of Petersburg December 15, 2005. She began her fourth term on January 1st, 2018. She entered the demanding world of criminal justice and law enforcement where she worked her way to the top from a counselor with the Virginia Department of Corrections to where she was the first female superintendent to run an all-male correctional facility. She retired after 28 years with the Department of Corrections. Since her tenure in office as sheriff, she has acquired certification as a national certified jail manager and is the only sheriff in Virginia to obtain the Department of Justice status of being certified PRA, Prison Rate Elimination Act auditor. In 2010, she was elected unanimously by all of the Virginia sheriffs to serve as the president of the Virginia Sheriff's Institute. In 2012, she was unanimously elected by all 123 sheriffs to serve. And was just elected as president of the Virginia Sheriff Association in September of 2017. Up until January 2017, Sheriff Crawford was the only African-American female to be serving as sheriff in this country. Round of applause, please. Oh, the sheriff! Present this certificate of recognition to Sheriff Vanessa R. Crawford in recognition of your professional contribution, dedication to the city which directly impacts the enhancement and safety of the city. And recently becoming elected as the president of the Virginia Sheriff's Association, it is with great pleasure and gratitude, I present you this certificate of recognition on behalf of the city of Petersburg. Your commitment to the well-being and the safety of the community is appreciated. Presented the sixth day of January 2018. Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, hold this one.
Sheriff Crawford?
Good evening, council and all of the citizens in Petersburg. I just want to say thank you so much. It's been an honor serving as the sheriff here in Petersburg. I'm not gone yet, but I also would like to accept this certificate not only on behalf of me, but the men and women that serve with me every day. We're a team, so I would not get this without them. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Sheriff.
The next item, item eight, communications and special reports. Item A, International Association of Assessing Officers Presentations.
Mayor Perin, Vice Mayor Hart, councilmen and women, it is a pleasure for Mr. Woodzell and myself to be here this evening to share a summary of the findings from the IAAO operational audit of the city assessor's office and development of a performance review process. Mr. Woodzell has been involved in the assessment profession for 37 years, is the retired former assessor for Albemarle County, is currently involved with the city of Charlottesville Assessment Office and the Vision software appraisal software company. I have been involved in the assessment profession since 1994 and am currently the city assessor for the city of Hampton, Virginia. Mr. Woodzell and myself have both been presidents of the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers. Mr. Woodzell has served as the president of the International Association of Assessing Officers and I have served on the executive board of that organization. So, without further ado, I'll go ahead and go through our process and findings and some recommendations. So, we're going to sort of be tag teaming here a bit. So, to start off, we came to Petersburg last September and spent three days in what we called a discovery workshop and that was better. And that workshop gave us the chance to immerse ourselves in the assessor's office and gather the information that we needed. We began that process with interviews. During that process, we interviewed the interim city assessor, John Nelms, the former city assessor, Richie McKeithen, the real estate assessments clerk who has been in the office for a number of years and was a great resource, Crystal Green, and the part-time assessor, part-time appraiser, Sam Davis. During this process, we found no documented policies or procedures. Also, we found no appraisal reports with the exception of the commercial appraisal reports that were being conducted by Mr. Davis. We became familiar with the Patriot AssesPro computer assisted mass appraisal system and were able to delve into the details of that system and become familiar with it and how it was, or I really should say, not being utilized by the staff. We also were dealing with performance reviews and we did not receive any copies of performance reviews for the assessor or the staff there. And we'll address that a little further on, later on. Okay, I'm going to pass the podium here to Mr. Woodzell.
Thank you. Happy New Year to the city council, Mr. Mayor, and the citizens of Petersburg. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. As you can see on the findings, we have four categories, lack of documentation. It was our opinion that the office review revealed that the policies, procedures, and practices of the assessor's office were not documented in office manuals, operational plans, or strategic plans. One of the most critical items we found was that the office has no central filing systems throughout the office for any type of forms. This would include building permits and appeals and workflow. And I'll speak to that in a little bit later. But we found building permits pretty much scattered throughout the office in piles and it was very difficult for us to determine where the permits were, what were the results of those permits. You would go into the AssesPro by Patriot and you would see on the permit that the values had been worked, but they had not been entered into the system. Now, there's a system involved there that the office is using and I'll get in again to the KAMA relationship to the assessor's work in a little bit. Non-use of the KAMA system, as I have mentioned already. The system is currently only being used to store the final values. The system was purchased to manufacture assessed values. And those assessment software packages come with reports. Those assessment software packages ensure that the work is being done and that, again, normal procedures are being followed. The system is not being used. So, you bought a piece of software, again, I'll speak to later, but at this point, the only thing that's put in there by manually, here's your land value, here's your building value. Lastly, as Brian has mentioned, there is no current performance review being conducted on the assessor or apparently the staff in the office. In our findings and through the interviews, I think there was mention that there may have been in one review the entire period that the former assessor was here. Brian? Staffing. Currently, the office has one employee that I know of and that's the assessment clerk, Ms. Green. So, our recommendations tonight and included in the report would be to hire as soon as practical, budget restraints understood, but hire as soon as possible a full-time qualified assessor and an experienced staff. That's critical. Internal controls. The office needs an organizational plan and a statement of duties and responsibilities. Reassessment of the city. Our findings led us to conclude, and against this came with discussion with the assessor, prior assessor, that reassessment of Petersburg had not been conducted for at least three years. We're not sure how many years prior to that a full general reassessment had been conducted. And lastly, on this slide, budget. The office of the assessor raises revenue for the city, so it's very, very important that the assessor have a budget to ensure the work is being done with accuracy and equity, that they're utilizing the KAMA system in a timely manner for the office to complete its duties. I'll be happy to answer questions later if that's where we're going to speak to tonight. But on the budget, it's very, very essential that the assessor have an appropriate budget so that the office can operate as it should. Next slide, Brian. The Patriot Properties AssesPro is currently installed. It's been installed for quite a while, but as I've mentioned, it's not being utilized. It is our suggestion that the system go live as quickly as possible. The system is fully capable of assessing the city of Petersburg. System has all three approaches to value. The system has a capability, like I mentioned, of creating reports. Those reports are very, very important. The system can display sketches. It can disclose...
But I also would like to accept this certificate not only on behalf of me, but the men and women that serve with me every day. We're a team, so I would not get this without them. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
The next item, item eight, communications and special reports. Item A, International Association of Assessing Officers Presentations.
Mayor Perrin, Vice Mayor Hart, Councilmen and Women. It is a pleasure for Mr. Woodzell and myself to be here this evening to share a summary of the findings from the IAAO operational audit of the City Assessor's Office and development of a performance review process. Mr. Woodzell has been involved in the assessment profession for 37 years, is the retired former assessor for Albemarle County, is currently involved with the City of Charlottesville Assessment Office and the Vision Software, appraisal software company. I have been involved in the assessment profession since 1994 and am currently the City Assessor for the City of Hampton, Virginia. Mr. Woodzell and myself have both been presidents of the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers. Mr. Woodzell has served as the president of the International Association of Assessing Officers, and I have served on the executive board of that organization. So, without further ado, we'll go ahead and go through our process and findings and some recommendations. So, we're going to sort of be tag teaming here a bit. So, to start off, we came to Petersburg last September and spent three days in what we called a discovery workshop, and that was better. And that workshop gave us the chance to immerse ourselves in the assessor's office and gather the information that we needed. We began that process with interviews. During that process, we interviewed the interim city assessor, John Nelms, the former city assessor, Richie McKeithen, the real estate assessments clerk who has been in the office for a number of years and was a great resource, Crystal Green, and the part-time assessor, part-time appraiser, Sam Davis. During this process, we found no documented policies or procedures. Also, we found no appraisal reports with the exception of the commercial appraisal reports that were being conducted by Mr. Davis. We became familiar with the Patriot AssessPro computer-assisted mass appraisal system and were able to delve into the details of that system and become familiar with it and how it was, or I really should say, not being utilized by the staff. We also were dealing with performance reviews, and we did not receive any copies of performance reviews for the assessor or the staff there. And we'll address that a little further on later on. Okay? We're going to pass the podium here to Mr. Woodzell.
Thank you. Happy New Year to the City Council, Mr. Mayor, and the citizens of Petersburg. A pleasure to be here tonight. As you can see on the findings, we have four categories: lack of documentation. It was our opinion that the office review revealed that the policies, procedures, and practices of the assessor's office were not documented in office manuals, operational plans, or strategic plans. One of the most critical items we found was that the office has no central filing systems throughout the office for any type of forms. This would include building permits and appeals and workflow. And I'll speak to that in a little bit later. But we found building permits pretty much scattered throughout the office in piles, and it was very difficult for us to determine where the permits worked, what were the results of those permits. You would go into the AssessPro by Patriot, and you would see on the permit that the values had been worked, but they had not been entered into the system. Now, there's a system involved there that the office is using, and I'll get in again to the KAMA relationship to the assessor's work in a little bit. Non-use of the KAMA system, as I have mentioned already. The system is currently only being used to store the final values. The system was purchased to manufacture assessed values, and those assessment software packages come with reports. Those assessment software packages ensure that the work is being done and that, again, normal procedures are being followed. The system is not being used. So, you bought a piece of software, again, I'll speak to later, but at this point, the only thing that's put in there by manually, here's your land value, here's your building Lastly, as Brian has mentioned, there is no current performance review being conducted on the assessor or apparently the staff in the office. In our findings and through the interviews, I think there was mention that there may have been in one review the entire period that the former assessor was here. Staffing. Currently, the office has one employee that I know of, and that's the assessment clerk, Ms. Green. So, our recommendations tonight and included in the report would be to hire as soon as practical, budget restraints understood, but hire as soon as possible a full-time qualified assessor and an experienced staff. That's critical. Internal controls. The office needs an organizational plan and a statement of duties and responsibilities. Reassessment of the city. Our findings led us to conclude, and against this came with discussion with the assessor, prior assessor, that reassessment of Petersburg had not been conducted for at least three years. We're not sure how many years prior to that a full general reassessment had been conducted. And lastly, on this slide, budget. The office of the assessor raises revenue for the city, so it's very, very important that the assessor have a budget to ensure the work is being done with accuracy and equity, that they're utilizing the KAMA system in a timely manner for the office to complete I'll be happy to answer questions later if that's where we're going to speak to tonight. But on the budget, it's very, very essential that the assessor have an appropriate budget so that the office can operate as it should. Patriot Properties AssessPro is currently installed. It's been installed for quite a while, but as I've mentioned, it's not being utilized. It is our suggestion that the system go live as quickly as possible. The system is fully capable of assessing the city of Petersburg. System has all three approaches to value. The system has a capability, like I mentioned, of creating reports. Those reports are very, very important. The system can display sketches, it can display pictures, and it can be linked in with the So, we recommend that if and when, more quickly than, well, as soon as possible, hire an assessor and have this system up and running. And that may take some expense, and it may take some expertise on behalf of Patriot to come in and assist with that duty. It's hard for management to control the office if the system's not being utilized because then you have appraisers doing work outside of the system, and that would create, in our opinion, the opportunity to lose some equity of assessment. Brian?
Data collection processes of property and improvement information. When we arrived, we requested of the IT department to provide us an extract of all property information, and that was provided for all 14,541 parcels. Analyzing that data, we found that there were 222 properties without sketches, 12 properties without images, 1,107 properties without roof covering information, 535 properties without building condition information, 530 properties without exterior wall descriptions, 519 properties without floor types, and 456 properties without building grade information. And while those numbers may not seem significant, they are very important because without the proper information in the database, you cannot create accurate property assessments. Because if you're going to use the Patriot system, it has to have all of these data elements in it accurately. We also randomly selected 25 improved parcels, and we found that a third of those 25 parcels were missing data fields or had inaccurate information. So, again, that's something that's rather alarming that out of those 25, a full third did not have the information needed to do an assessment. So, with that in mind, I'm sorry, things there. With that in mind, we recommend that the city undertake a reinspection program, and this program, we would recommend, be based on the IAAO standards of mass appraisal. And in that standard of mass appraisal, it recommends that jurisdictions undertake a complete reinspection of properties every five years. If that were to be done on a five-year cycle in Petersburg, that would mean that just 2,800 parcels would need to be re-inspected every year. And when we say re-inspected, we mean exterior inspections of the property. With three appraisers on staff, that would mean just under 1,000 parcels a year per appraiser. And figuring that one can do 20 parcels a day, which is something of a standard that we utilize in our office in Hampton, that would mean just 48 days of each year would be devoted to the reinspection program per appraiser. Something that seems to be manageable, and we'll talk about time management in a little while again. To help move that process along, the reinspection process, we would recommend that the city obtain oblique photography. I know you have, I think you have access to aerial photography that's supplied by the state, but oblique photography allows the appraiser to, from their computer, look from all sides of the building and measure it down to four inches in detail. And that is extremely helpful coming from a urban environment where you're not always able to get into backyards because, you know, the backyard may be locked or whatever. It allows the appraiser to go ahead and get that information without even having to go into the yard necessarily. So, I think that would be very helpful. And oblique photography does have an added benefit for public safety agencies. Police departments tend to use it, fire departments as well. Another piece of data collection information, we would recommend delineating assessment neighborhoods. Right now, there are 64 assessment neighborhoods defined by the assessor's office. For the last three years, the city has had an average of 100 market transactions used on which you could use to base a reassessment. So, that means you really only have one and a half sales per neighborhood on which you could base a reassessment. Now, that's not very reliable. So, in order to get something that would be more statistically reliable, we would recommend combining neighborhoods and having neighborhoods with a minimum of 500 homes per neighborhood. And that would increase the number of sales that you would have per neighborhood on which to base the reassessment. So, statistics would have much better statistics with those combined neighborhoods. Moving on to other aspects of data collection, processes of property and improvement information, property transfer data. Property transfer data is really the first step in doing a reassessment, so it's extremely important. Right now, there is a semi-automated process in place where the information from the Bright system that the treasurer uses is transferred to the assessor's system. We understand from the clerk that that system is not perfect, and it requires some manual follow-up, so we would recommend that that process be enhanced as necessary. As the appraisers follow up on that information that's imported into the system, right now, they will, they'll do research on the sales and the transfers. None of that information is being captured in any kind of centralized files at all. We would recommend that it be in a centralized file, preferably within the KAMA system, within the Patriot system.
Right. Bruce and Brian, I have a question down here from Councilman Cuthbert, if you would mind taking it this time.
Gentlemen, would you revisit with council, please, your statement about how it would be advantageous for there to be 500 parcels in, I'll call it, an assessment module? I didn't get quite the lingo, but that's the idea.
An assessment neighborhood. And that's because the appraiser is, the appraiser is looking at the sales of properties to base the new assessment. So, you want to have as many sales in a neighborhood as you can to make your determination of whether the assessments should be increased or decreased or remain the same. So, right now, with 64 neighborhoods, last year, as I said, over the last three years, it's been, on average, 100 good market transactions on which to base a reassessment. So, if you, you know, average that out across the 64 neighborhoods, that means there's only one and a half sales for every neighborhood. So, you know, if there's only one sale in a neighborhood, and let's say it's the best house in the neighborhood, that sale may not be indicative of the whole market. So, you wouldn't want to necessarily raise the assessments on all the homes in that neighborhood on that one good house. So, what you want to do is just create bigger neighborhoods so you have more sales to give you better confidence that those sales are representative of the whole neighborhood.
But if there is no consistency of structures within the expanded neighborhood, we've got more numbers, but we don't have more accuracy.
Right. You want to be careful in the process of doing, of defining those new neighborhoods, and you want to, you can still have a neighborhood where the homes may not be identical, as long as you take into consideration the differences in construction grade, the ages, and all of those differences can be done in the KAMA system. And then the KAMA system can adjust for those differences as you go through the process of that expanded neighborhood.
I can envision many a neighborhood in Petersburg, tight little neighborhood that is unique in its quality and character and value. And when we're dealing with a tight neighborhood like that, and we start expanding our scope of view to 500, I don't see how that necessarily gets us any closer to accuracy.
Well, it's a challenge, and there is judgment involved in it. If you have a bank appraiser coming in to do an appraisal for a loan, that bank appraiser would have to go to a comparable neighborhood for the comps to use for that appraisal for the loan. So, that's very much what the process that a, an appraiser for a local government does when he creates these larger, he or she creates these larger neighborhoods. And again, what you're asking the assessor's office to do is mass appraisal, which just, you know, that title itself, mass appraisal. You're acknowledging that you're dealing with many, many properties, and you're not going to have the distinctions that you would have if you were just doing a neighborhood of 15 homes. And what the appraiser does when he creates these larger neighborhoods, they look to see what are the houses selling for, did sell for when they, when they did sell on a price per square foot basis, and try to come up with something as comparable as possible to group it with. And it is a challenge. I went through the process in Hampton. We had over 500 neighborhoods in Hampton, and over the last five years, we've reduced that by half, and we only have 250 now, which of course means we have twice as many sales in every neighborhood on which to base our reassessment. And it gives much more confidence to the property owner to know that, that the assessment's being based on facts and just not because, oh, we think the market's doing better, so we're going to increase your neighborhood even though nothing is ever sold here with the rest of the neighborhood. So...
If that neighborhood, though, was unique in particular due to certain factors like geographic location, that neighborhood could still extend and exist on its own, but we're just recommending if neighborhoods can be studied and the reviews indicate they can be consolidated, that's not a bad thing. That's our point.
Thank you. Building permits, which Mr. Woodzell has already touched on. We found that right now, building permit information is being passed along to the appraisers through hard copies of the building permits. And there is currently no tracking system to know that the assessor's office is receiving all the building permits, nor is there any system within the office to know that all the permits have been addressed and added to the tax roll. So, we again recommend a centralized filing system, preferably with as much information as possible, being kept in the Patriot AssessPro system. And we would recommend, if possible, for a data import process to be developed the same way the transfer information is being imported from Bright. We would recommend that the building permit information be imported from the code compliance office. Geographic data, just one minor item. The process for creating new parcels in the city, when a new parcel, when a parcel is split and two parcels are created, right now, they keep the original map number for the, for one of the parcels and create a new parcel number for the other. In accordance with IAAO standards, it would be better to make the old parcel, the original parcel, inactive. So, all the information on that parcel is preserved as a snapshot in time, and then the two new parcels, or however many parcels are being created out of the old one, are all created new. That's a relatively minor item. Cost and depreciation data. Most jurisdictions, as the city of Petersburg, utilize Marshall and Swift cost information. And right now, the staff was using a printed copy of Marshall and Swift data, and we would recommend that Marshall and Swift data be acquired so it could be used in the tables of the Patriot AssessPro system, and then it would all be integrated into that, you know, your product that you've already paid for, for the use of. At the least, you can buy a standalone version of Marshall and Swift, but it's a little cumbersome and that it works independent of the KAMA system that you're using. We have tax credit and land use programs, and we've already alluded to this. Again, right now, the information is not being kept in any kind of centralized filing system, so we recommend that be done. And again, as much of the information as possible that can be incorporated into the Patriot database, the better. Pass back to Mr. Woodzell.
Thank you. Currently in the office, the internal sales ratio studies can only be done on a street level, so each street would have its own sales ratio study. There's no way to do a broad spectrum under one report. To that also, in the office, the former staff, there was an IT employee who actually developed a series of programs to assist the office. And the IT employee left, and when he left, the programs went with him, from what we were told. That's not a good thing. Therefore, we again come back to you have a wonderful product right here in Petersburg. It just needs to start being utilized. Now, in addition to your own internal sales studies, which leads to your conclusions for reassessment, the state of Virginia does an annual audit on all jurisdictions within the state. I want to make that clear, that it's not just Petersburg, it's all jurisdictions. So, Brian, if you can go to some slides. So, what I've tried to do on this slide is just indicate some statistics over the last three years. This state is always behind in data, so they're currently working on 2016, and that's why that's not there. So, I've included on the slides the number of sales, the median ratio, and the coefficient of dispersion. Now, this is for the entire city. Ideally, you'd want your median ratio to be 100%. That's 100% fair market value. As you can see currently, it's right at 104. You'd like your coefficient of dispersion, and that just means how far away percentage-wise are the sales from the median. So, you can see that the overall ratio there maybe is 14, 14 and a half. Ideally, that should be closer to 10 or less. Next slide. Now, I've broken it down by single-family urban. Again, the last three years, there's not, as Brian has mentioned, there's not a huge amount of sales. Excuse me. But again, you can see that your median ratio is exceeding 100%. Your coefficient dispersion is exceeding 10, and your price-related differential is 1.3. I'll speak to that in a minute. On the bottom, I put in the commercial. Again, not a huge amount of sales, but you see your median ratio there is pretty accurate. You're 96, 97% out of 100, and that's acceptable to the IAAO standard. Now, your coefficient is somewhat erratic, but commercial properties are unique, and they sell for different reasons, and they are a little harder to appraise, but those numbers could be tightened up with KAMA. The price-related differential again exceeds 1. What the price-related differential is explaining to Brian and myself is that the city is doing a better job of assessing the lower-priced properties versus the higher-priced properties, which indicates the lower-priced properties are carrying more of a tax burden. So, that's why, again, we come back over and over to the fact that the city needs to have a general reassessment. Next slide, Brian. And we were told we had 30 minutes. We've gone beyond, but we're getting close. Is it still okay to proceed?
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. On resource expertise and workload capabilities, we reviewed the job description of the city assessor, which seemed to be in good order with just a couple recommendations. Under essential functions, we suggest adding a line that the assessor be responsible for administering an annual assessment program in accordance with state and local laws and standards of professional practice. Under additional duties, we suggest adding the rehabilitation tax credit program. And under data responsibility, we would recommend adding the reinspection program that's being recommended. Under resource expertise and workload capabilities, we also did a comparison of other similarly sized jurisdictions. So on the chart here, for those that may not be able to see it, we also are looking at Goochlin, Harrisonburg, Hopewell, Salem and Fairfax City. And we were comparing the budgets, the staff, the appraisers, the cost, looking at the cost per parcel and the parcels per appraiser. And what we found here is that the city of Petersburg is among the lowest budgeted on a per parcel basis and it has the highest parcels per appraiser. And in keeping this analysis in mind, we have considered this city assessor to be one of the three appraisers, although in actuality, it may be more accurate to say that there are only two and a half appraisers since the assessor will be doing administrative and planning function. So please keep that in mind with this analysis. So if you take the assessor out and just say 2.5 appraisers, that brings up the parcel count to 5,600 parcels per appraiser, which is quite high. I know in my office, we have 4,000 parcels per appraiser. So just looking through here, what we would recommend with that high of a parcel count that perhaps there be a half time appraiser position added to bring the parcel count down or a full time position being added. The half time position would would then give you the true 4,700 parcels per appraiser. Adding a full time person would bring that parcel per appraiser count down to 4,000. And the importance of being properly staffed, of course, is that you hopefully will be in the process of implementing, fully implementing your Patriot Kama system. And that's going to take time among the staff. And also, if you're adding the reinspection program, that's another another duty to be added to the staff as well. Looking at workload capabilities a little further, using historic office workloads within the Petersburg Assessor's Office and industry standard production rates, we again, using an office of three appraisers, which you've already acknowledged is maybe really only 2.5, we came up with the major activities of the office and how many days would be spent on each activity. And we began with the knowns that we had and the items that were more measurable. And those, of course, were permits, periodic reinspection, the rehab tax credit program, land use and exemptions. And we calculated the amount of days per appraiser to be spent on each of those. And then the remainder was 86 days per appraiser, which given the fact that you do only have 100 market transactions per year, the 86 days devoted to reassessment per appraiser seems perfectly, perfectly reasonable. So we feel that these numbers are fairly good and indicative of what should be spent on each activity within the assessor's office. And all of this fits into 222 workdays, which is what the appraisers have available to them. When we arrived for our discovery workshop, we found no operational or strategic plans within the assessor's office. So part of what we felt was important was to provide a recommendation for an annual calendar. And we've done so here with the the main activities being reassessment here. And we've laid that out for you. And this is a calendar that may vary a little bit from what you have. It's a calendar that I utilize in the city of Hampton and it works out very nicely because it provides final budget numbers to our council in January. So you have the basis for which you can work your budget in the early spring. And moving on to performance appraisal review. And we're actually asked to really just do this for the for the city assessor, but we've sort of expanded our expanded our look a little bit more to the entire staff. We would recommend that a performance appraisal review be done annually or semiannually and that those reviews include relevant performance measures. And those are the four positions that, you know, we had in the office when we visited. And those, each of those positions could really have distinct performance measures that could be included in each one to help move the office along and be sure that it's kept on track. For the assessor specifically, we would recommend that the assessment sales ratio, which is of course, we talked about in general, the state does an assessment sales ratio. That's an outside objective look at how your office is doing. Your office can also conduct its own assessment sales ratio throughout the year. So that that's an aspect that should be included. Implementation of the Patriot Kama system would naturally seem to be something you would want the assessor to be measured on. And then also the reinspection program as well. Conclude there and pass on to Mr. Ray. Next, Brian. In your packet, I believe, you have a complete performance appraisal review recommendation.
Okay, defensive values. This is a very important part of the assessor's job because ultimately, those notices are going to be mailed to the citizens and the citizens have the right to come in and ask the assessor questions, the appraiser or the assessor. And we would like to emphasize naturally that the informal process take priority. We think it's good policy for the staff to talk to the citizens first. Sometimes it's just the information on the assessment card could be wrong. Sometimes it's just the citizen wanting to know, why did my assessment go up? Sometimes we don't get it right. So we recommend that the informal process be a priority to the assessor. And the other thing, this is a simple process for the citizen. There's absolutely no fee involved. So they can come in, ask for a review. And then we recommend that the appraiser write their final opinion of value to the citizen, notify them formally in writing after the review has been held with the assessor to make sure that that person is aware if the appraiser now has a change. The next step is to the Board of Equalization and those members are appointed in the Petersburg by the judge, circuit court judge, I believe. And that is a little more formal. So what we recommend there, and the office is doing this, but we recommend that a form be filed to the Board of Equalization and that that form be time stamped and that form be filed numerically so that there's no possibility of those forms being mislaid and that the citizens be notified well in advance of when the hearing with the Board of Equalization would occur. And under state code, those days need to be advertised. Most assessors do that right on the notice. Sometimes though, those dates can get pushed around a little bit, so. And then lastly, of course, is the citizen always has the authority, if they feel aggrieved, to ask the circuit court to listen to the case of an appeal. One final note again, and I hate to just keep repeating, but there was there was a little bit difficult to find where are all the appeals? What condition are the appeals in? Have they been looked at? Have they been finalized? Has the citizen been notified? They're not filed all in the same place. So again, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's critical that all these forms be filed in a central location so anybody could go to the file, especially the assessor, and be able to judge what is his staff doing. That's it. We'll take questions if there's questions.
Vice Mayor Hart.
Yeah. Outside of the Patriot software, you talked about us being inundated and other things. What do you recommend as it relates to us within our revenue department?
I know the office over the last few years has been using Microsoft product Excel and they and they've been doing their assessments using that. And there are some, I mean, IAAO itself does actually create a program that tells you how to assess using Excel. But I find the fault of that being, again, does the assessor understand and realize what those individual appraisers are doing? You can also lose equity. And equity is one of the two most critical things. Fair market value and is it equitable? Because it always boils down to tax burden. So it's again, our opinion, you have purchased a good product. It's there, it just needs to be turned on and utilized. It's going to take some upfront work, as Brian mentioned, to get it up to speed. But it'll do everything you want it to do. It's got all the bells and whistles any product would have. So I would recommend again, you've got a good product that's recognized in the market. It's not the one I sell, but it's a good product. And it's located in five or six other jurisdictions within the state so that you could possibly just ask for user group input from other assessors right here close by. I know Colonial Heights has got it. So that's our, again, our recommendation. To go outside now and look for other software would be expensive. And you've already got it and it works.
Mr. Goodyear, Mr. Woodzell, knowing the situation the assessor's office is in, what path would you recommend the city take? A mix of bringing in a private assessors company to help bring it up to speed or going through a hiring process to try to bring in one or a mix of both to bring the office up the bar?
Okay. Brian and I have talked about that. I think the, I guess, at this point, the advantage to be hiring an outside firm. They do this through Oak the State. There's some very reputable firms out there. Brian and I could be involved if you want our input on that. Just giving you a list, we wouldn't say this is the, got to be careful. But that's an immediate fix. I don't think it's a Band-Aid. It's an immediate fix if they go through the processes that we've described by going door to door, measuring homes again, taking pictures, making sure the data that they're assessing is accurate. If they just take the data that's in the system now, I'm afraid the results won't be as accurate as they should be. It's always best, in my opinion, to have an assessor in the office, that person then is there daily to answer to the citizens of this community. And they deserve that. And the staff should also be available to the citizens. But sometimes it's difficult to get the right fit. IAAO does offer on its website a job posting so you can advertise it across the country. There are firms that will do headhunting, like for a city manager. Also, they would go out and hire for an assessor. But that assessor is got to be someone that's going to come in and be willing to work. Really, that assessor needs to work, not be, in my opinion, someone that's just public relations. And the staff that they hire needs to be qualified from the start. You can hire folks that are just getting into the business and there's a lot of good individuals out there that want to go to work for government. But I think experienced people at this point would be better.
Could you provide us with that list, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That would be great.
Be happy to.
Okay. Any other questions for members of council? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
The next item, item B, financial report. Mr. Ray.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
I would just like to remind the council, what what we're looking at is the actual numbers that are in our financial system through December. So that's six months or 50%. Oh. Do you want to hand me the thing? Oh, okay. So the first slide is for the major funds. The general fund, we're going to go through in detail in just a moment. The public utilities fund is revenue is at 56%. The stormwater funds revenue is at 61, almost 61%. Transit's revenue at 20, almost 26% is something that we're looking at very carefully. In that $3.2 million of revenue is $1.4 million of grants from the federal government. And at this point, none of those grants have come to fruition. The transit people and finance people are working very hard to be able to build those government grants and get that percentage up. The general fund revenue, we break it down. And as Commissioner Cuthbert mentioned last time that I was up here, general property tax is the 800 pound gorilla in this category. And at 36.8%, that does not look good. But let me tell you a couple of things that, and I'm not going to say we're going to do great, but a couple of mitigating factors. One, first one is that personal property tax and machine tool taxes are billed, personal property in February and June and machine tools only in June. Those two tax categories account for almost $9 million of the $34 million revenue. If you take that $9 million out, makes the percentage go up quite a bit. So we do have a timing issue. Commissioner Cuthbert, would you like those exact numbers? You want those exact numbers? I'll tell you, personal property tax is budgeted at $6,984,000 and machine tools is budgeted at 2.7 million. $6,984 and 2.7. So that's a little over $9 million. Changes the ratio. Those bills go out in February and June. So we shouldn't have expected those revenue items at this point.
Mr. Ray, at this time, Councilman Cuthbert would like to piggyback on you.
Oh.
Thank you for highlighting this concern because it's a concern of all members of council, I'm sure. As you say, the the general property tax line is the 800 pound gorilla. And it's it's quite troubling. I wonder if in the future, it would be more useful to council, and this is really a question I'd like your insight into, if the general property tax figure was given to us instead in its components that you mentioned to us? You know, the machinery and tools, the business and professional license component and the real estate licensing. And maybe there are some other other components in the general property taxes. But that would help us see, real estate taxes are coming in as budgeted, so that's not the problem. And and there really is validity to the explanation or hope that it's simply a question of timing because we would then be able to see that whatever it is, the we would then be able to see that whatever it is, the personal property, the car tax that comes due, that's billed in February and in June, we could understand why we were not receiving any personal property tax revenue, any car tax revenue in December, because the last bill for car tax went out in June.
Okay. I appreciate the comment, and what I can do is build a second schedule behind this one that breaks that down into some detail, and I'll do that for you.
I certainly don't want to overburden you with detail, but the $34 million figure versus, and the 36.86 percentage on this general fund revenue breakdown page really doesn't give us an explanation in any way as to what, whether there's a benign force at work here, merely the calendar, or whether we need to put metal, pedal to the metal, you know?
And I'm not going to tell you that we don't have concern, because we're really on a tight rope here. But we do have a couple of items that mitigate that percentage. The other item on the other side is that so far, prior year taxes, we have received So in that 12 million, one, we budgeted $518,000. That's a little over three and a half times, I hope, and I don't have any facts to say that that is because we are pushing the envelope a little bit harder than we used to, but it's, it would seem to, the facts that I have received today, we've taken 114 properties to Sands Anderson. The last 50 went out since we talked last time. And that last 50 has a value, a taxable, and we won't get a million one, but that's a million one worth of dollars that have gone out for collections in the last 60 days since we talked last time. And like I say, we're not celebrating these numbers. We're really tight, but there are some mitigation that we need to understand. I wanted to point out this number, if I can make this thing work. Maybe I can, maybe I can't. At the very bottom, $6.649 million is the liquidation event slash RAN. We know that the $6 million liquidation event isn't going to happen, but also in that category, in that grouping, I put the RAN that did happen that wasn't budgeted, plus $149,000 that we received for sale of a building in December. I think December 28th or something, very, very tight on the end. And some of my explanation there, next time, we're going to bring you a budget amendment, and you will get to see some where we foresee, project increases and decreases in some of these categories. Just some notes there on when taxes come due. And then on the expenses for those funds, all these funds are underrunning their expense And maybe a bigger concern is the dramatic amount that Stormwater is underrunning its category, but we're all under 50% year-to-date for those expenses. And then dropping the general fund into some categories here for expenses, and based on a suggestion that I received, and I appreciate suggestions, the liquidity event and RAN expenses are on a separate line item. You can see general government expended about 48% of its budget, and none of the categories are over 50% except debt service, which had, as you might remember, some, before the restructuring, some larger debt payments at the beginning of this year, and schools is at 66%. Finally, I wanted to break out a couple of the categories there so you can get a little more detail, but all of our, all of our departments, all of our major groups are under 50% spent for the year thus far. I'd be glad to try to answer any other questions that the council might have. Councilman Cuthbert?
Mr. Ray, go back to Stormwater and share with council, please, the explanation of why the percent of budgeted amount is only 16.9. In the big scheme of things, this is a fairly small line item, but also, on the other hand, it seems to me that this would be something that would be in the city's control as to what we spend on Stormwater. So if it's, if that's a line item that's under the city's control, why is it only 16.9% of budgeted? Did we just budget too much?
No, I don't think so. I believe that we haven't done big projects in Stormwater. So, but I will get back to you on that and give you a written explanation of what's going on in Stormwater.
Well, when the budget was designed, there was an expectation of expenditures to be made. Are we waiting for the spring to come before those expenditures are made, or?
I don't know the answer to that, Councilman.
Again, this is not what concerns council the greatest. I think what concerns council the greatest is that at the end of the year, we're going to be well below budgeted revenues. And here I am talking about a relatively modest line item on the expenditure side.
If you mind, I can speak to, Stormwater is one of the areas where we also have a transfer for supportive services. And in a previous year, one of our issues had been we borrowed from the Stormwater account, so we have not transferred funds from Stormwater to the general fund, which is a budgeted item. So for support, we have both personnel under Stormwater as well as projects. One example would be in our capital projects of a Stormwater project is the reopening of North Park Road. So when you see 16%, part of that is the fact that we have an administrative function that occurs, which is a transfer from Stormwater to the general fund. We have not done that. And so, and that was purposeful, because in a previous year, as council has pointed out, there was a loan which was taken from the Stormwater account, and so we are tracking that, and we will make some adjustments when we get to our budget adjustment. And part of that, we will get into in much more detail when we do our budget amendment, because what we are trying to do is learn some of the actions that have occurred that we need to account for.
Maybe the accounting can help us get to the, a meaningful number when we do an amended budget, is that?
Yes. And Stormwater is not one that you, you want your revenue to come in, but we are doing projects, and part of the projects are spring projects. For example, we were fortunate enough to finish our Stormwater project on North Park, and so Stormwater falls under Public Works, and so that was that bridge and work repair. There are some other projects that we hope to start in the spring where you'll see more expenditures from a capital standpoint coming out. But right now, that fund goes in for, sometimes you do maintenance of right-of-way and things like that, a lot, which is much more heavier in the springtime under that area.
And thank you. And let me go to revenues through December 2017, that page. It's got just four line items on it. The bottom one is transit, and it shows that we have received only 25, almost 26% of budgeted transit revenues.
Yes.
For the first six months. Why is that number not closer to 50%?
Transit has a very heavy federal component, and we are awaiting our federal grants. When we went to Washington, we spoke with our congressman, the Department of Transportation funds much of the activities under the Transit Authority. We have not received a transfer of federal funds that are owed to us, and we are hoping, we've closed out all of the accounting issues. We had an audit that occurred last week within the Transit Department, and based on that audit and closing out some final housekeeping, we hope that the funds will be transferred, which subsidizes operation of our Transit Authority, because it is a regional Transit Authority.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson Smith?
Yes. We talked a couple of months ago about keeping up with the collection rate for the water. I think it was Mr. Cuthbert who talked about possibility of the water bill even going down if our collection rate was kept up. Can you elaborate on the past six months, what, how the collection rate has been?
So, actually, I could go to my computer, but we have been tracking the collection rates. They've come up to the low 80s for most months. Haven't got but, I think, one month of the last six or seven that was over 90%. We hope, and with the reorganization of collection and billing, or billing and collections, get the right order, sorry. And we're starting again in February to disconnect those people who have long-term delinquent water bills, that we'll bring those up in close to 90%.
So at one point, then, it did go under 80% for one month, and the rest of the months have been in the?
I did memorize the whole stream. I know that most of them were in the mid 80s to low 80s.
Can you, if you, if it's feasible to the both of you, if you think what I'm getting asked makes good sense, when we, when we get a chart, say it says revenues through December, if you could show that line item, like on a six-month basis, and we can look at it and say, okay, it was this in November, it was this in December, and then we could, we could track for ourselves if we're getting it in that manner?
Monthly collection rate, so if you'd like a monthly projection, we can do that.
To show on the whole, yeah, on the whole chart as, you know, December. For instance, this month would have shown, not only December, it would have shown November, October, September, so we can see for ourselves how it is actually moving up or down.
Absolutely, and we'll make that also available to you. We do track it, and one of the things that we've been focusing on is monitoring it. We do have, we've had increased collections, but also included in that number will be some, once we've done cutoffs, you'll have payments that are larger than that amount, so that will account for when you see a 90% rate. So the collection rate may include back payments included in that. So we will provide that to council. And what we'll do is also, I think you've asked a number of times, we will make sure that in our monthly financial reports, that report is included in the reports on a monthly basis, and that will help to answer that question.
So there have been no cutoffs in November, December?
I can't answer that question.
I don't believe that we did any cutoffs in the month of December.
No.
But we were cutting off prior to the shuffling of personnel, and we, I chose not to do that during a period when there was enough confusion in the personnel. That was my decision.
I was at a city and school meeting last week, might have been week before that, but it was mentioned that the absenteeism in two of our schools, being Stewart and Robert E. Lee, was extremely high, so it's like 175 a month. And so I was just wondering if it had anything to do with the water being turned off. I've asked the school board for the data, so I'll just get it.
Our cutoff numbers are not as high. I don't have the exact numbers. I think what we also, and most cities, are very conscientious in the winter months about what we do. We have the ability to work with our social services department, specifically if there is a youth involved in that household, they have ways of helping to support water connection. We, for example, in winter months, are focused on what things you do and don't do. Even the electric company and gas companies focus on not doing cutoffs during those seasons, so this is that season. Right now, we've got both units merged together, where we have both your billing and the conversations, and we have the ability to work with folks. They're not going from one place to the other, so that is working, and we're happy with it, but we want to make sure that we're continuing to track it. And we'll talk some more in the budget presentation, because there is the rate issue that's tied to some of our bond refinancing that we need to make sure that we're focused on. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item, item C, city manager's report.
Mayor and council, you have received a copy of my report. I started the report with just an update, and most of you have heard the update on the fire that we had today. At 5:20 a.m., we suffered a severe fire. With the support of our surrounding communities, as far away as Henrico and Richmond, individuals have stepped up to help us. We will stay on the scene overnight, monitoring the fire. We are not allowing anyone back into those units. In that apartment complex, there were about 75 total units there, of which half were, reached some damage. All individuals living in the units are not allowed to return because there is no power. High Street, I've looked online, I think we're about 200 individuals who are without power. We will work on restoring power to that area, but it will be on a progressive basis, because we've got to clear some of the rubble away before Dominican get in, so High Street will stay without power, and we'll keep you updated. We ask everyone to continuously check our website. I do, as I said, want to thank the Red Cross, as well as some of our local ministers who've stepped up. They actually have supported our folks who were displaced and did not have apartment, places to go by paying for them to move into the Motel 6. And so I want to thank Ms. Tyus and the social services team, and our local volunteerism group for really helping us to step up to service those people, so, yes. And she wanted me to make sure I said something about it. Oak Street, AME Zion, Dr. Lyons, and Michael Sherman from Zion Baptist. Each of them donated $500 each in order to pay for hotel rooms until Friday for those individuals. We have room for 10. If we need more, we're willing to work with them. I also want to thank our transit, we didn't get a chance to mention them, our Transit Authority opened up for us. They brought over shuttles to get everybody over, and we really, really appreciate all that they've done. Moving on, one of the other things I want to mention is we have removed all boil notices as of right now. I must be cautious to you to say that when we have an event this large, it also required us to redirect water services. And so some of our supplies, because this was such a massive fire, became low. So I will keep you up to date if we have any additional boil notice. Water service has been shut off, I believe, in some of the areas, and including the building. We are also going to be, as you know, we are expecting snow tomorrow. Right now, V-Dot crews pre-treated all of our roads on January 15th. We will continue over the night watching and monitoring. Right now, we're expecting the snowfall to hit around 5:00 a.m., and so staff will be out monitoring it. What we have made a decision, the schools have shut down, and because of the extent of how long the snow is going to start, we're expecting snow from 4:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. tomorrow. We have decided, because the safety of our employees is utmost important, and with the schools being closed, we've decided that we would close City Hall tomorrow to ensure that we have safety first. We will have safety, public safety crews on duty, all essential employees will report, and any questions, non-emergency questions, call 911. We will also be monitoring to make sure that everyone, if you're without power or service, that we're following up and getting updates online for you. Finally, and last but certainly not least, Ms. Tyus is going to give you just an update on our efforts during the winter months on tending to our residents who may be displaced.
Good evening, council. Happy to announce that our efforts associated with the fire have gone very well, but as we extend into the cold area, we're doing very well with the First Baptist Church effort to provide shelter. In checking in with them today, we still have room for at least 10 other folk to join them, so we still got capacity there. And as we're driving around, we're just not finding a lot of people, so we'll, in conjunction with the police department, we'll keep an eye on how many people you might find outside to give them assistance in getting to shelter. So that'll be the extent of the activities that we have. It looks like- It looks like we have, uh, a little capacity. Um, any questions?
Yes, I have one question with Tyus about, um, I know when this first happened, the, um, Salvation Army was holding beds for us. Are those beds still available in Richmond that they said that we had just in case?
Um, so, the, the intention of, of mentioning the Richmond beds associated with Salvation Army was really to accommodate residents that they already had. So, the, the, the offer for extra space in Richmond no longer exists associated with the Salvation Army closing. They use what they had as a resource to accommodate the, uh, residents who are already in their care.
In their care, okay. Thank you.
Um, last thing, I need to acknowledge and thank the council, the mayor, the city manager, and everybody who participated in the, uh, first MLK High School Ambassador's Training Program that went on yesterday. Um, we had approximately a hundred and seventy people to participate, and about seventy-five of your high school students, athletes, uh, from Petersburg High School that joined us in an amazing day of learning. Uh, we also sent a team of those, uh, young people over to the First Baptist Church, uh, where they cleaned and set up shelves and did inventory and had an amazing experience. So, I want to thank Tammy Yerby for her efforts in putting that all together, and I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Annette, um, uh, for being a part of the coordinating, Mayor Parr, um, um, Councilmember Hart, uh, I mean, Councilmember Hill, for all of you all's support on that day. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item, item nine, consent agenda. The minutes are the regular council meeting of December twelfth and a special city council meeting of December nineteenth. Item B, to schedule a public hearing to amend the city code to eliminate the requirement to display a vehicle DCAO. Item C, schedule a public hearing for the disposition of eight oh one South Adams Street. And item D, to schedule a public hearing on a second amendment to the fiscal year two thousand eighteen general fund budget. The suggested date for those three public hearings is February sixth, two thousand eighteen.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Yes, I move that we accept the items for the consent agenda.
Councilman Myers?
Second.
Questions from members of council, uh, Councilman Cuthbert?
At what point will the public be informed of the terms of the proposal to purchase eight oh one, uh, South Adams Street? Will that be before or after the public hearing?
It would be after the public hearing.
Is it going to be after the public hearing?
Right.
Well, it seems to me that the public hearing is pointless until the public knows the terms that are being suggested for the sale. Um, a public hearing without a proposal is just an empty gesture, seems to me. So, I would suggest that we, for better or worse, we let the public know before the public hearing what the proposal is so that the public, the public can comment at the public hearing on the proposal. It may be that the public thinks that the proposal's a great idea, uh, maybe not, but to, uh, otherwise, the public never gets to weigh in on the merits of the proposal. So, I, I'm not sure whether this needs to be formalized as a motion, perhaps so. If so, I will make it at this point. Uh, I move that the public be informed of the terms of the offer for eight oh one South Adams Street before we hold the public hearing on disposing of the property. Maybe I have to do a substitute motion because we've got a motion on the floor, so...
There's a motion on the floor.
Right. All right, I make a substitute motion that before we schedule the public hearing on the disposition of any of the property owned by the city that goes by the address of eight oh one South Adams Street, the public be informed of the terms of the proposal. Is there a second to that motion?
There's motion on the floor? There's no seconds, so the motion dies.
Why would the, why would council not want the public to know what the terms of the offer are?
Vice Mayor Hart?
Yes, um, I'm not sure what the misunderstanding of it is, but doing the disposition of any property that we have at public meetings, we provide all the information to the public as to what is actually going on and what is being stated, so negotiated or whatever the case may be, so, um, this information will be given as all other information that's been given in the past when we dispose of a property. So, they'll have that, not only at the meeting, but if they look out on the website when we put out the agenda, they can go out and request their information just the same. So, it's not that the information has been hidden or anything else. Um, and I'm not going to go into discussions of co-session where this attempts to be heading to, but I think that the disposition of property and any information that we've ever had goes out to the public, um, before, uh, giving them a chance to look at it before they come in and have discussions on it. We don't do it two weeks before, we haven't done it, and no other location does the same.
Mr. Mayor, uh...
Council Cuthbert?
Maybe then this is not an issue, uh, but is, is the information going to be available to the public before we have the public hearing?
Isn't that what a public hearing is for?
Councilman, Councilman Lyons? Right.
Mr. Mayor, so the terms of the offer will be, uh, known to the public before we have the public hearing, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yeah, the disposition of the property, the details of that acreage and everything will be available.
No, I'm not talking about the details of the acreage, I'm talking about the details of the offer.
Right.
The, the sales price, what the proposed use is.
Right, right.
That will be made available to the public before we have the public hearing?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so the previous, uh, motion is on the floor again. All right, but we had a second. That was to approve the consent agenda as stated. Madam Clerk, would you please call her up?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithley?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith? Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Parr?
Aye.
Motion's passed. The next item, item ten, public hearing, a public hearing on a request of Petersburg Shopping Center LLC to rezone thirty-six hundred South Crater Road identified as tax parcel one zero one dash zero six dash zero eight zero zero from PU Plan Union Development to be general commercial district to allow medical, professional, and business office uses. Ms. Peters.
Good evening, Mayor Parr and Vice Mayor Hart and members of council. The request for your consideration this evening is to rezone a, um, portion of property that was recently, it wasn't recently, but that is currently zoned PUD, and so the request is to change that zoning to facilitate attracting, um, additional users of the shopping center. And so the red icon, um, on the graphic on the screen shows you where it is, and the significance of me showing you this is so you can see how close it is to South Side Regional Medical Center, and those of you who are familiar with the center, you know that there is a lot of new medical, um, ancillary type uses that are located along Medical Park Boulevard. And so the request is to rezone the shopping center from a PUD, and in this PUD, it's very specific to say retail use, um, that currently exists, and so it doesn't give you the wide span to say commercial or general commercial, it says retail use. And so with that, our office is limited to only allow the owners of the property to sign leases with those persons that are doing retail type uses. And so the request is to, to, um, increase the opportunity for them to attract other type of users such as business and professional uses, which would also allow medical uses. Um, in the six years that I've been with the city of Petersburg, we've had numerous of inquiries of individuals who would like to do offices there, um, even had a daycare who inquired about locating there, and based on the way the PUD is currently written, we were not able to allow them to do that without us going through this process. And so currently, there is only one tenant that's at the shopping center, and so you're looking at about twelve thousand four hundred square feet of commercial leasable space, and you only have a tenant there using, utilizing twelve hundred square feet. When this picture was taken, AT&T was a, um, customer, but they are no longer there at that location. And so the request is to change from PUD to B two, and with that is really restrictive though, because it's only opening up for medical, professional, um, retail, and general commercial uses. It is not opening up for those uses that would require a special use under the B two. And so if someone was to come in who wanted to do a use that's permitted in our zoning ordinance, the way it is written, it says that if you're in a B two, you can request a planning commission and council for a special use. We're not entertaining any of those uses. We're only looking at those things that can be done by right of a medical office, a professional office, a business office, a retail space, a daycare, um, adult daycare, those type of commercial uses that are currently categorized in our zoning ordinance and would be permitted, uh, without coming to planning commission or city council to get approval. And so that is the request for your consideration, to change from PUD to go to B two. B two zoning exists across the street, um, to the south, you've entertained a rezoning of a large parcel of land that used to be zoned agriculture that later went to a PUD, and you've rezoned it to the M one C, and then Walmart is still zoned PUD specific to retail commercial space, and then you have existing dialysis and other type of medical uses that are adjacent to the shopping center. Uh, Mr. Smith has been the agents, the owner's representative for a number of years. They've had about five different representatives of this shopping center, and I guess everyone, the owner was trying to get someone in there, he didn't have anybody loc- locating at the particular shopping center, so he kept changing agents hoping somebody would be able to attract, um, a tenant to go there, and so Mr. Smith has been, um, the, representing the owner for a number of years, and he is here present tonight. He travels from North Carolina, so he would like the opportunity to address you, and then at the appropriate time, if you have any questions of the planning staff, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters, and good evening, council members. Um, nothing really in great detail to add, other than the current owner has held the property since two thousand and eleven, um, maintained the property well, but with a ninety percent vacancy rate which he currently has, we're just simply endeavoring to broaden the scope to allow other users to hopefully rent some of the space. That's all I would add, but open to questions if you have any.
Thank you. We will be opening the floor for public comment.
At this moment, I open the floor for public comments? Seeing no hands since public hearing is...
Uh, this phone public, uh, comment session is pertaining to the Adams property, correct?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You are. Seeing no hands since public hearing is closed.
Councilman Hill?
Council, I move that we approve the recommendation coming from the staff to change to P dash two, general commercial zoning district.
Councilman Myers?
Sir.
Any questions from members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call her up.
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithley?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Parr?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Next item, public information period. A public information period limited in time to thirty minutes shall be part of order of business at each regular council meeting. Each speaker shall be a resident or business owner of the city and shall be limited to three minutes. No speaker will be permitted to speak on any items scheduled for consideration on the regular document of the meeting at which the speaker is to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes. The first speaker is Eleanor Fitzelle.
Yes, and we ask that everyone could please stay within your three minutes tonight. I know we've had a long day here in the city of Petersburg, and, uh, we have some, um, city employees and staff that, uh, are displaced right now, and I know they have to get to their accommodations, so please, out of respect to them, can we keep everything within three minutes? Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, excuse me, could you stop me at two because I've made a couple notes, okay? Stop me at two minutes so that I can stop what I had prepared? Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of council, my name is Eleanor Fitzelle and I reside at twenty-one oh four Bishop Street in Petersburg. I would like to take a moment to address several issues. First, I usually shop with the same number of limited retailers in Petersburg. I have never paid much attention to the sales tax until I returned a single item and saw the tax returned was incorrect. Since that time, I have paid attention to several real, re- retailers, and it appears there may be an issue. While I am not sure of our exact tax rate in the city of Petersburg, I think it is higher than many other localities, and I do know that it's higher than four to four and a half percent. And for example, the item I returned was twenty-one dollars. I got six cents back for tax. Secondly, with all the, uh, with all due respect to the plane, Barbara Michelle, I have long noticed that there are many businesses of the same type and nature here in Petersburg. I have wondered how any of them could profit. For example, how many beauty parlors and barber shops does one small town need? Secondly, how do you need so many of the same type of restaurants with the same cuisine within walking distance of each other? And thirdly, how can so many businesses in this town be open for three days and make a profit? Now, you know, I spoke with the Assistant Director in Planning, and he told me it's an issue of supply and demand, however, I have my humble opinion. My notes are as follows. Ms. Councilman Wilson Smith, I have a degree in education and planning. I would like to volunteer for your committee, please. Secondly, um, one issue that I was advised now to talk about, I understand state inspections are a law in this state. I had my car inspected in October. As I was driving home that night, I was told my headlight and taillight were out. I want to point that out to everyone. Since that time, I have been in the same establishment, and I heard someone say, uh, that backfiring in a car is not dangerous. Now, I'm not a mechanic, but I do believe that causes a fire. Uh, next, Mayor, uh, Councilman Myers, I would also like to volunteer for your committee in tourism, okay? Finally, Mayor Parr, my first intention was to tell you that in a public meeting, it's probably rude to spend so much time... it's probably rude to spend so much time on your phone. I would like to say I'd enjoy playing phone tag with you, okay? Have a blessed night. Thank you to everyone who's helped me. God bless America.
The next speaker, Brandon Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, counsel, administration, and fellow citizens. Brandon Martin, 1546 Berkeley Avenue. First, tonight, thank you to Dominion Energy and their contractor for clearing the right of way along North Boulevard sidewalk from Sycamore to Berkeley. The sidewalk is once again ours to walk. This has been an issue that I've had with Public Works for many, many years, and finally, Dominion Energy has dealt with it. Secondly, this is a prior inquiry revisited twice before in the last few years. I've inquired about exactly where are the elevator inspection certificates? There are 12 active elevators in city-owned buildings. There are two more that are out of service. Only two have, within the past few years, ever had posted certificates, being the Petersburg station and the library. The remainder have likely never been inspected. Just what are the plans to rectify this? Is it a safety issue? It's a state code issue? The previous answers that we received from prior administrators have been off-base or factually totally incorrect. Third, prior inquiry, I'm revisiting, just how is the money from the Dunn Trust being used in the city? This was supposedly for downtown beautification. Next question, regards to city website that has apparently been reconfigured again. Just where is the Center Hill mansion story on the city website? Once again, it's just disappeared. There's no reference to the link of information for the Petersburg Preservation Task Force. Blanford Church is mentioned in text, but the text is out of date, and there, there is no reference to the task force. Next, this is more a suggestion or a comment, recycling and litter education. Consider just how many residents ignore the recycling opportunities presented by CFS and the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority. So too, how about the city, the housing authority, and all the condos and apartments in this city? Frankly, I think recycling is a forgotten element in those places. Close to two-thirds of the litter that I pick up, almost on a daily basis now, two-thirds of it is recyclable. A suggestion, well, how about a litter tax for the takeout food, beverages, and cigarettes? Say, make it $5 a transaction. That'll get their attention. It also would pay for Public Works to hire a couple crews to keep the city clean. This summer, I had the opportunity to visit the city of Petersburg, and they have a clean team. Downtown was frankly almost spotless, and that's Pittsburgh, which was the armpit of the north years ago. Why not us? If the Dillon Rule gets in the way of this, then add it to your 29-team legislative agenda. Lastly, I asked last month about car 1215, where are you? I see no response. Thank you.
Next speaker, Richard Stewart. Yes, sir. Next speaker, Michael Edwards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, citizens. I'm gonna kind of just wing, because everything I wanted to talk about changed. This morning, the city was shook by something-
Mr. Edwards?
Oh, I got you, I got you. Michael Edwards, 409 Grove Avenue. This morning, about 4:52, I had a power surge at home. I did not lose power, but some were not as fortunate. When I opened my front door, the scene that I seen in the distance looked like something you would see in Armageddon. I immediately got dressed, as I have family close by where the fire started, went to the top of the hill, and the sight that I seen was, lost my words. The first person I ran into was our city manager, and I was glad that she was safe. As the morning progressed, I seen a city team come together like I've never seen before. Now, a lot of us, we come up here, we complain, I've done my fair share. But I do want to give public acknowledgement, as a citizen, to the police chief, to the city manager, to our wonderful fire department, who are, in my opinion, grossly underpaid for the job that they do. The temperatures were 24 degrees this morning, and not once did the temperature cross their mind. I do want to specifically speak on one thing that I seen. Petersburg Police Sergeant Nelson, carrying a child that was trapped in one of the apartments to her police car. Unfortunately, my phone had died, and I was not able to get that picture. But all the pictures of the building on fire made the news. But believe me, if my phone was charged, I'd have made sure that picture made the news. Our men and women in uniform, they do it not for self, but for us in this city. And I think we, as citizens, need to give them the credit that they deserve. They're not going to please everybody, but this morning, if you witnessed what I witnessed up there for three hours in the cold, helping them the best that I could, it made me proud to be a citizen of this city and to see her team that she's put together work to make sure everybody got the care that they deserved. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Next speaker, Limwood Christian.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
My name is Limwood Christian. I reside 613 St. Matthew Street here in the city of Petersburg. First, I would like to thank, although the police chief is not here, this young man in the back here, Randy Batts, one of the, as I call him, the jewels of the Petersburg Police Department, because thanks to the police department, and especially when they sent Officer Batts around there, a lot of things have changed like you would never believe. There's less hanging out on the street corners and everything. And the reason why I say Officer Batts, because he's one of the boys from the hood. And when he comes around there, he can talk to those guys like some of the other policemen cannot talk to. And even when it comes down to putting cuffs on them, he's still joking with them and reading them their rights. And so in the event that we do have a, some kind of conference or something about police and community relations, Officer Batts should be one of those people who sits on that panel. Also to you, Councilman Cuthbert, your meeting has shown that you or somebody's listening, because I've had an opportunity to go down through Old Town, and I've seen some of the police officers sitting in the cut. And it has changed a whole lot of activities down there. As I said, even maybe if an officer's not in there, the fact that I heard somebody say, there's a cop car over there, so the policeman can't be too far, it has made a difference. Also, to Councilwoman Smith Lee, to our assistant city manager, to most of those who took the opportunity, they didn't have to do it. And of course, Ms. Treska Wilson Smith, who worries me anyway during my time of illness that has been going on, thank you all for calling me to see how I was doing. I know that there are many who wish I was gone on to help push up daisies. But unfortunately, y'all, stay on your perch, because that piece of scrap is not here yet, but I still thank you for that. I also want to say, last year, one of our councilmen talked about listening to the citizens. I'm going to say to you all again, please listen to your citizens. Stop having these closed sessions when you're calling council to order and you're staying there for I don't know how long, and then we have to endure these 30, 45-minute, hour-long presentations. Tomorrow is a, well, probably Thursday, a chemo treatment for me, and I like to stay on top of things going on in my city, but at the same time, reports that should be on the internet, on the online are not. I don't feel like sitting here no whole hour, listening to somebody putting me to sleep. Thank you so much. And last but not least, thank you all for the interpreters. Thank you all so much for them, because now I'm trying to find out where can I go to school to learn in it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Ms. Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Dolores Smith, I reside at 410 Mister Toaster Street in Petersburg, Virginia. And I want to give a shout-out to our Councilman Howard. He, right away, got on a crisis for us. We have a senior that's in my Neighborhood Association, and she didn't have any heat for four days, and one of those days was zero temperature. And for four days, she's been calling housing, trying to get them to fix her heat with no response. She called the work order, no response. So she called me, and she said, Dolores, I, I, what's that thing that'd be on TV where the people come out, the news media and everything? And I said, what's going on? She said, I don't have any heat. And so I said, wait, let's, let's, let's do something else first. So she said, well, what can I do? I said, I'll call you back. I got in touch with Councilman Howard, and I told him the situation, told him that she's been calling housing with no response. And Howard asked me for a name and telephone number. I gave it to him, and I gave it to him, and within a couple of hours, this lady called me. She was so happy. She said, he fixed my heat, they fixed my heat, they fixed my heat. So she's never been out to any of the council meetings before, so she wanted to come out, but the doctor wouldn't let her come out because she has a cold virus. And so she couldn't come out, and I told her I will thank him for you. So I want to give a shout-out to Howard. Thank you for helping us again with the Neighborhood Association.
Next speaker, Michael Herbst. Next speaker, Tom Roslin. Okay, okay, no problem. Next speaker, Ken Pritchett.
Good evening, city council.
Good evening.
Ken Pritchett, 1113 Overbrook Road. I remember this time. Greetings to all the city administration. Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year.
I have spent almost six days in the treasurer's office. We've been closed three out of the 10, and I had a meeting and training one day. So it's been a really awesome experience. I'd like to, I wish the sheriff was still here, but I hope you remember her comments about, she mentioned that the sheriff department was a team. I would like to see the finance department, the tax collecting department, and the treasurer's department be a team also. There are lots of things that need to be communicated, and these things are not being done and have not been done for a while. I requested that the city part of the budget that is paying two of the staff members and the treasurer's office be restored, which amounts to somewhere around $18,000. And the city manager said, we don't, we don't have $18,000, but we can find it for other things, which I won't mention. There's one person in that office that's been there 29 years, and to take $16,000 away from her, basically is basically shutting the door, and she'll probably be leaving and take another position somewhere else. She is the backbone of that department, and when her pay was reduced, the things that she has been doing for years for the city, lots of those things she's still doing. So I hate to see we, you know, the commercial chaos, the guy, well, I'm not going to be the fall guy for chaos. I had 70% of the voters in the city of Petersburg choose me to be their treasurer, and obviously, during the campaign, the duties kept being changed and changed and changed, and that's fine. I can adapt to that. But let me just mention a couple places where we can find $18,000, $20,000. The previous treasurer, the city portion of his medical payment, medical benefits, was $15,000. That's a substantial amount, and that's gone away. So that could be used. I'm looking into the contract with SunTrust Bank to eliminate the lockbox. The lockbox supposedly, according to the past treasurer, cost us $150,000, and I think we could find a little money out of that. Now, some of that, from what I understand in my limited time with calling SunTrust, is that this money has been wrapped into other services with SunTrust Bank. So I've got to get them to carve out what the lockbox charge really is at this point. I think that these two employees deserve better. I won't go into the things they're still doing, because my time is up, and next time I'll ask for an application to be on the agenda for regular treasurer's reports. But I needed to say this tonight so that you could hear it, and of course, not too many citizens are here tonight, but I would like to see us continue to develop our financial criteria and to be financially stable and solvent with not three different people going in different directions. We all need to talk and get our finances together. The reports are looking better, but it's, it's not good yet, because they're still, as the people that presented the assessors' report, was a very good report. I would like to suggest that a similar study be done for the finance department, the collection department, and the treasurer, so that all of these can be mailed together and show what our shortcomings are and enumerate them like they did. That was a very good report. I'd love to see the same thing happen with these three areas.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett.
I'm going to just finish very quickly, Mr. Mayor. There is a great loss of revenue, which we're all concerned about, by not communicating. There are, there are things that are not being billed, and there are things that are not being collected that we could all work together to, to get.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett.
So thank you very much for your patience.
Yes.
And I didn't run over as much as some of the other people before me did, and I appreciate how tired everybody is and how great a job everybody did with that great loss of buildings. And fortunately, no people were lost in that terrible fire this morning up on High Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Lafayette Jefferson.
How you doing, counsel? Mayor, city manager? I wanted to start out by saying thank you. With the recent cold weather we've had-
Mr. Jefferson?
1746 Brandon Avenue. With the recent cold weather we have, a lot of citizens have been concerned about the cost of the repairs to our water system. And I think that you guys may want to get more ahead of it to let them know that it would be a lot cheaper with the water system in our hands, as opposed to the water system being in the hands of Alqua or some other company. And I'd like to thank all of you for not only the responsiveness, but also the transparency with everything- with everything that happened with those water main breaks. Because out in Monticello and Lake Landor, they have people that are, Alqua America have people that are receiving automated messages telling them that it'll be repaired soon. But the citizens need to realize that they have someone to call and they have someone to hold accountable, which is you guys. And as of yesterday, there's also a family, there's also a family in Lake Landor that is suffering from chlorine burns. And this is the type of stuff that John Albrick and Cliff Parker will not tell you, but it's on Facebook. Because these people don't play when it comes to their family's health. And so why am I bringing this up today? And it's because with Cliff Parker and John Albrick showing up consistently at our city council meetings and sending people to every one of the water main breaks in Petersburg, they have not been deterred and this actually, they actually need to be shut down, period, flat, out of the system, no consideration. Because the last thing we need is zombie water in Petersburg. And for clarification, zombie water is just like a zombie. It's dead water that you do not want to drink and you do not want your family to drink. Y'all have a happy new year. I'll see you later.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Marcus Squires.
Evening, y'all. I'll be very brief. Uh, Marcus Squires, seventeen oh one Monticello Street, Petersburg, Virginia. Um, I just have a couple of questions for council tonight. Um, I am asking you all, uh, about the status of the Washington Street exit. Um, I was looking at some drafts that were put up and, um, you guys are going to make it easier to exit off the interstate. Uh, my second question is pertaining the old library building, the William McKenney, uh, library building. Um, the roof seems to be leaking, uh, it seems to be falling apart and I was just wondering now what the city was going to do about that building. And, um, thank you all for your time and have a great night.
Thank you.
That concludes our public information period. Next item is item twelve, business or reports from the mayor or other members of city council. Council member cover.
Thank you. Couple of things. Um, I want to thank Ms. Treska Wilson-Smith for sending members of council a table that showed a number of issues that had been raised, uh, during the last calendar year, but then not pursued. I thought that was an embarrassing eye-opener. It was presented in a very factual way. Uh, there was nothing belligerent about the presentation, um, but it was embarrassing to read because I realized that I was at least one-seventh responsible for, uh, the shortcomings that she highlighted. And one of those shortcomings is, involves Blanford Cemetery and the Blanford Sinking Fund Commission. I wonder if, uh, this city manager would be good enough to look into how we revive the Blanford Sinking Fund Commission and come up with a plan, um, to present to city council as to how many sinking fund commissioners we should have, what should their duties be, uh, what kind of reports should we expect from them? Um, that would be very helpful to us. The city charter speaks to the Blanford Sinking Fund Commission and yet we don't have one and it's been so long since we had one that there's no institutional knowledge as to what it did or, um, how it got appointed or what the terms were or anything else. So, uh, Ms. Farrell Benavides, is that something that you would, could look into for us and report back to council? And it, it's not urgent, but it, it is an embarrassment when we, when I look back and see that we've talked about this, I think, three times in twenty seventeen and, mm, again, it's my fault as much as anyone's, but, uh, no progress has been made in, in reviving that and that seems to be an essential part of the proper management and funding of, uh, Blanford Cemetery. I think there's some real funding opportunities there that are, uh, are going, uh, un, uh, unexercised, you might say. Uh, second thing, and thank you for that, Ms. Farrell Benavides, and, uh, let's say if, if you could report back to us sometime in March, that would be great if, if that's acceptable. Um, second thing, I, I went on a fascinating tour with, uh, former mayor, councilman, uh, Howard Myers. Uh, thank him for his time. Uh, also Wayne Crocker, also Ms. Tyus. The four of us went on a field trip and we went down to the National Park Service, uh, uh, unit, the Petersburg National Park Service Unit in Hopewell, that's the official name. It's the Petersburg National, uh, Battlefield, uh, it's the Hopewell Unit. And we watched a, a really moving film. If anyone here has, uh, watched that film, you'll know, you know what I'm speaking of. If you haven't, it's free and it's, it's history and it's our history and it's gripping and I encourage you to, uh, to take advantage of it. The takeaway from that trip was that Petersburg has a unique asset in the South Side Depot and that is a unique asset because it is the only, once we get it open, it will be the only unit in the Petersburg National Battlefield, uh, ownership that has tourist services adjacent to it. Restaurants, antique stores, um, uh, and, uh, other amenities that tourists would like to visit. Uh, the Hopewell Unit does not have that. The crater, which the National Parks Service calls the Eastern Front, does not have that. Five Forks in Witty does not have that. And so when you think about it, if you or I were a tourist, where would we want to go at lunchtime? We'd want to go to the South Side Depot because there were restaurants right there. So that's a huge, uh, economic op- opportunity for Petersburg. I thank, uh, our city manager for pushing that. She has been pushing it. It is a, a hard, um, bottleneck, you might say, to get through, uh, because of, uh, complications involving funding. It's not a question of doing the construction work, it's a question of lining up the, uh, grant from the Virginia Department of Transportation to pay for the work. So any event, it was a great trip. I thank Ms. Tyus, I thank, uh, councilman Myers, I thank Wayne Crocker, uh, and, uh, we will, uh, I'm sure the city manager will continue to push on that. Um, going to something we heard about tonight, the, uh, assessor's office, I wonder again, uh, Ms. Farrell Benavides, if, if you could come up with an action plan for council to follow so that this will not be something that we simply read about in a retrospective of what we talked about in the year twenty eighteen? Uh, and I thank you for that. And again, is that something that perhaps by March you could give us would be an action plan on how to move forward or?
Absolutely. We've been working, uh, alongside and since, uh, the assessor, the interim assessor's contract ended, we've had staff in there looking at some of the recommendations and, and as was pointed out earlier, it not only involves the assessor's office, but it's the tie-in with the revenue office, uh, Commissioner of Revenues as well as the finance office. And so what we'd like to come back with you is a couple of recommendations we have, uh, and, and an update on where we are through this process. So at the next council meeting, I'd like to bring you back an update from staff on what we've done and what are our potential next steps in this process too.
That's great. Uh, you know, there's a, a good way of looking at things and a, kind of a sad way of looking at things and the sad way of looking at things is that we have so many problems. The good way of looking at things is there are solutions and we just need to find them and they're going to make a big difference and it's going to make a big difference for the city. So that's the, the happy view of all of our problems. Most of them are very solvable, but we got to put our best brains to it. Uh, last thing, um, I'm wondering, we keep, uh, collecting in our utility billing department somewhere in the eighties, uh, percent of the revenues, maybe mid-eighties, maybe even low eighties, and yet we continue to dispense water. Is it the same eighteen percent or fifteen percent month after month after month that's not paying? I mean, oh, do we just continue to give water to people that are not paying in November, in December, in January, in February? Or is it different people in different months that are not paying? I mean, but maybe Charlie doesn't pay in November and Charlie's neighbor doesn't pay in December? Or is it always Charlie that never pays and he's just enjoying the water for free? Do you have any insight into that, Ms. Farrell Benavides?
What we have done is we, we're starting, people are understanding now that we've, we have a different level of how we handle collections. And yes, we do have individuals who were chronically behind payments. And so what would happen is people would pay a partial payment and so I, I think we are at a good point in time where when we come back, we'd like to give you an update on what we've done in billing and collections to consolidate, but also to start to work with people to let them know that we can't keep carrying balances. We also, uh, hope to bring back to council some options for us on how do we not allow it to get to that point. Uh, my biggest fear is that we allow, uh, folks to get so far behind, it's very hard to catch up. And so if you owe fifteen hundred dollars and you're paying a hundred dollars a month and your bill is a hundred and twenty, it continues to add up. And so we've got to change some of our processes internally to stop that. And so we would bring that back to council as some recommendations. There are some state laws that require us to allow a certain amount of time, but we have in some cases, I've seen bills that dated back to two thousand sixteen, fifteen, that have carried a balance. And so I'm hoping that we will have some options for council on how to address this issue.
Thank you. And when do you think you will be able to bring those options to us?
I'd like to tie this option, we're going to bring a budget amendment back and some of the options I think would be perfectly tied into the budget amendment because it will have that impact.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson-Smith?
Yes, thank you all for coming to your council meeting tonight. I want to start off by asking, have we scheduled the date for the retreat, advance meetings, et cetera? Okay, we, this council made a decision that we would hold our retreat, advance our meetings in the month of March. And Ms. Jackson has sent out an email requesting possible dates and I know that she got some from me. I don't know what else she got from anybody else, but I, I want to point out the importance of why we need to meet. One is that Robert Bob is expected to come back in April and from this, this book, this document, if you go through it, you'll see items that, um, he has left as recommendations for us. I sent all of these recommendations to council. This is what Mr. Cuthbert was speaking about in the beginning. I also reviewed our city council minutes from January seventeen through December seventeen and council has a lot of issues that we have voted on, but neglected to do something about. We need to meet as a council, I believe, and discuss, come to some decisions and do something about these items. We voted to have the retreat and to continue to put this on the back burner only adds additional items to what it is that we need to do. I'd like to say, if you'd give me a few minutes, I, I liken this to us getting sick, us being the city. You go to the doctor, you look for help, you pay your money, your co-pay for him to help you to get well. Robert Bob's been paid, help us get well. He gives us recommendations like the doctor do. You get your prescriptions, you get your recommendations. We got him. You go back to the doctor and the doctor says, have you done this? Well, no. Did you go to PT like I told you? No. You wasted your money and we wasted time. We have recommendations that we need to do, we need to at least talk about, we need to discuss so that when Mr. Bob does come back, we can at least say that we have at least looked at it. I am fearful that the state has paid this man to do this. We have the recommendations. If we don't do it, I would hate for the state to move in to the city to try to take over. And I also wonder, how do we look when, when you're the patient and you've got this coming to you and you do nothing with it? The second thing that I would like to discuss is, at the last council meeting, I showed you a PowerPoint about the Jowsby Cook School. I explained to you that it was the very first African-American elementary school in the state of Virginia. I showed pictures about how bad off it is. Tonight I want to tell you about, uh, an individual who lived in Petersburg. She lived on Dunlop Street. Her name was Victoria Adams. She was an African-American, um, was a born in Petersburg, but this is where she lived. She used to be a minister at Virginia State University. She was the founder of the Mississippi Freedom Democratic Party. Um, she was accompanied by Fannie Lou Hamer and Annie Devine as the first three women to be seated as guests on the floor of the U.S. House of Representatives. I'm telling you all this along with the information about Jowsby Cook School because the, this city prides itself in being a historical city and we are. But right now, we focus on the, the history of the Civil War and we do not focus on the African-American history in our city and it is rich. It is very, very rich. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that we allow or, or give to the preservation task force the, the charge to preserve the history of the African-American population in addition to what they are currently working on. And this would include the preservation of the Trailways Bus Station and other buildings which house the history of the African-American, being the Jowsby Cook School, the, um, Victoria Adams House, et cetera. And that is a motion.
I, I second the motion.
Wilson. Okay, Councilman Smith, leave. All right, now, uh, discussion from members of council. Um, Councilman Cuthbert?
I'm very supportive of the idea in general of broadening the, or, or helping the Petersburg Preservation Task Force determine its priorities. But I wonder what the best way to get this done is. Have we sat down with the Petersburg Preservation Task Force and talked to them and, and, uh, asked them whether they have the assets and resources to do this? If not, what they would need, uh, what they would need from the city? I think in concept, they embrace the idea, but this is, we all hear about unfunded mandates and this has the earmarks of an unfunded mandate. Um, so on the one hand, I'm sympathetic to the goal, but we've got to think about how best to harness the energy of the Petersburg Preservation Task Force and what can we give the Petersburg Preservation Task Force in the way of resources so that they will have not just energy, but means? So, I, I don't know that the way to go about our ultimate goal is to decree that this is what is to decree that this is what the Petersburg Preservation Task Force should do. I think we've got to start at the other end of things and sit down with the Petersburg Preservation Task Force and ask them what they think about this idea, what are the specifics, what are they gonna need in the way of assets? What kind of timetable can we realistically, uh, expect of them? And who knows what other issues? So, I, I'm, as I say, I'm sympathetic to the motion, but I, I, I think we need to go about this in a softer way than just an edict from city council.
Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Um, yes, I'm appreciative of Councilwoman Cuthbert's comments and I, I do thoroughly understand, we have not met with them as a council. I have spoken with several members. It's, it's my understanding, and I really believe this to be true, that by including the history of the African-American population, then that opens this task force up to several other grants that they're not necessarily, that's not necessarily available to them. Um, and, and I can say, we had a, a interest in this city from some, a developer who wanted to come in and do some things. Her remarks to council was, "You're not promoting your African-American history enough. You're not promoting it at all." And if you did, you would have more developers to, to come in. Uh, but there are members of the task force here tonight. If they could speak for a few minutes, um, I'm open to that, if council leaves. Mayor?
At this current time, I'd like Ms., Ms. Benavides to, um, I wanna ask you, have you had any type of talks with the task force about that? And, uh, give us an insight?
Uh, yes, we had a meeting now with Ms. Tyus and the task force about, uh, a little over, maybe a week or two weeks ago, to talk about their future direction. And, and actually, that is one of the focuses as far as African-American and, and expanding it and even focusing on the word Siege Museum and changing that. Uh, where we are is, I believe they've hired a vendor to come in and develop a strategic plan so that they can better define who they are. Uh, Mr. Muse also attended a historic preservation conference where there were grant opportunities available. What we have to look at as a city is, where do we want to fit? Where do, what is our future plan? And how does the Preservation Task Force fit into our future plan from a historical standpoint? And as we start looking at what structures, there are a number of structures they're interested in, we have to see how that fits in the overall city's economic development plan as well as the other decisions. But I do believe that we are on our way to doing what you've mentioned, Councilwoman, is working very closely with them on defining what is their role in the future of Petersburg. They stepped up when we were in a time of need. They helped us to keep our museums open, they've raised funds, and they've been a beneficial asset to us. Now, as we start to move forward, we need to make sure that we solidify this relationship. And I think Ms. Tyus has worked on getting an agreement with them, but what does that agreement look like in the future? And so what I would commit to do for you, because I think it is a, a conversation that is at the forefront, is have Ms. Tyus to come back and, and sit down with them and bring back a proposed agreement of how we'll work together with them. Uh, if not the next council meeting, the second council meeting.
Second council meeting? Is that a fair councilman, Ms. Smith? Um, yeah, someone to get Vice Mayor Hart's question first, and then?
No.
Did you get?
In charge.
Okay, you're good. Okay, uh, Mr. Chipman, Mr. T. Muse, I know I hear from the task force. Right, just, you can brief us?
Yes, I'll do this very briefly. Uh, I'm Chipman, I'm the executive director of the Petersburg Preservation Task Force. First of all, you asked for what are the resources? The resource is, uh, the task force wants to apply to the National Trust for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the city is not allowed to do that, only, um, not-for-profits are allowed to do that. So, acting in coordination with Ms. Tyrus, the city manager, uh, there would be a proposal that would be sent, uh, to the National Trust for that money for an African-American, uh, display at, uh, the Trailways Bus Station. The reason that this is brought up today is because the, uh, timeline for that, uh, grant is the end of the month. So, there, the question today was, was there a consensus from the city council to allow the, uh, task force to apply on behalf of the city for that hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Now, the interesting thing is, is it's a letter of intent. They will come back in the next thirty days after you apply and tell you whether you are kicked up to the next step or whether you're rejected. So, within, by the, by the middle of March, you'll know as to whether this is, uh, possibly, uh, an opportunity to, uh, to get that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, that's what the timeline is. That's the reason there's a certain level of urgency. Excuse me, and that's why there is a, uh, uh, the, the, the idea that that hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be used as seed money to help kick this into high gear.
Yes, Ms. Tyus, please, yes. Come on, to the microphone, please.
Being very sensitive to the, the time constraints of that, it would cause us to have to make a commitment to turning over the Trailways Bus Station for, for this particular grant. So, I'm, I'm being conscious of theirs, but, um, not, not necessarily wanting to have that timeline drive us to a decision like that. So, we've, uh, uh, the city manager has given me the task of sitting with the Preservation Task Force to talk through all of our things. That timeline just might not work. Okay?
Now, I'm confused, but what, what I'll say is that the, there is no re, there is no obligation on the part of the city to have to say, uh, uh, that there, that the city is obligated to do this. The question is, is whether there's an opportunity to ask for the money. In thirty days, you'll know whether that asked. And then you can make another reconsideration as to whether you wanna go to the next step. But what we didn't want to do was to ask for the money on the city's behalf and have the city come back and say, "Well, we never, we never knew anything about it. We didn't wanna, we didn't want to, uh, to, to, for you to do that." So, w- we thought that tonight would be an opportunity for you to say, "The consensus is, yes, go ahead and give it a shot. Come back to us at the end of February, the beginning of March, and tell us whether you were successful, and then we'll reassess uh, what kind of obligations we have to take at that time." But there's no, there's no obligation right now in seeking the money.
Yes, Councilman Hill? Um, Ms. Peters? Sure, sure, Ms. Peters?
So, I just wanted to provide a little clarity in that as your planning director, historic preservation is in the planning department. The Preservation Task Force is under, um, Mrs. Tyus as the deputy city manager. At this point, we have not had that coordination, and I believe that's what Ms. Tyus was speaking about. We need to have that coordination because I need to know what my responsibility would be as the office that housed the preservation planner. That's a part of our function, to work with Department of Public Works with the maintenance of our historic structures and to make sure that we are keeping with the standards. I'm not there yet. We'll get there and we'll make myself available and we will work as we always have worked with the Preservation Task Force. But I really would ask that we would slow down and, um, afford me that opportunity to work with our buildings, not just the Trailways building, but there are other historic, um, properties that we need to be mindful of as well.
Councilman Hill?
I understand the urgency and I understand the, um, I'm not, I'm not really, I want them to try to get the, uh, the funds or whatever. Do you ha, do, do you all have to have that building?
In order for?
In order to do the application?
It is necessary relative to the application and the letter of intent.
But you, you're already a five oh one three C?
Yes.
So, isn't that the requirement?
We're, we're talking about, we're talking about a letter of intent to the National Trust. What we seek is ultimately permission from council to act in a capacity that submits a letter of intent to the National Trust. Now, if you all give us, uh, the temporary ability to pursue or to submit this, this letter of intent, then we can come back to council relative our success or failure and discuss further steps. Uh, tonight it would be very helpful, uh, to all parties relative to the, the time that we have and do not have and the conversations we've had and not had, to receive from council what is ultimately permission to submit a letter of intent relative to the Trailways Bus Station.
I, I understand what you're saying, but the thing is, that may, that may not be the vision of the city to turn that into that particular structure. So, the thing is, if we were to sign that over to y'all for the temporary reasons for, you know, getting, amassing this money, that may not, I don't think, we have to discuss that. And it's like pushing it a little bit too fast without our administration vetting it and, and go, and going through it. Um, a building of that significant heritage and all, I'm, I'm, I'm just a little uncomfortable with, are we, you know, just doing something that fast? So, I don't know.
Relative to, relative to the cost of, of all of the properties that we have in the city that, that hold, uh, historical designations on the national and the state level, uh, this is the most financially responsible, all things considered. Uh, there are other sites that have equal, if not, you know, more historical significance. However, the prices involved in what would be the, the reclamation of those sites is a cost far beyond, uh, the capacity of, of organizations at this point. And to act in a capacity that does not seek, uh, available sources of money creates a difficulty that, quite frankly, the National Trust is very familiar with.
All right, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Smith Lee?
Um, yes. After, um, the young man's presentation and, and also, um, listening to what the city manager spoke about, also the deputy director, which this falls under her, what is the urgency? Uh, and I know that this money has been here, um, I, I, I got from, um, um, Councilwoman Treska Smith that, um, this is a yearly grant that you?
No, th- this is a grant that will ultimately be decided in the summer. So, um, this is, this is not to extend beyond?
It's, 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 so, if you decide, if, if we decide not to go with this, that you, you're saying that the grant, we can apply for it during the summer?
No, 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 no. Uh, the National Trust has very recently announced the African-American Cultural Heritage Action Fund. And this action fund is twenty-five million dollars to be spent nationally in this immediate cycle. They are acting very aggressively and they are, with very short notice, providing localities the opportunity to act in a capacity that goes after, uh, these sites. This is in response to a lot of the, uh, difficulties that the country has seen nationally and as they seek to make sense of racial reconciliation efforts. Petersburg has actually been targeted due to a staffer that worked in the National Trust from Petersburg. So, she laid quite a bit of groundwork that we are simply following up on relative to the ability for the Petersburg Preservation Task Force, a five oh one C three, to act in a very responsible capacity to submit a letter of intent. The letter of intent with no strings, uh, from the city would allow us to, to simply submit what would be a letter of intent speaking of the virtue and the value of the site. Now, if we have our letter of intent accepted and the National Trust and the action fund request from the Petersburg Preservation Task Force a full application, at that time, we would require, uh, from the city, permission to have some site. We can discuss the virtues of which site at that time, but it would be, it would be, it would be easiest for the task force to engage the Trailways Bus Station relative its position in the city and its historical context. Uh, this is to get their attention. If at that time we pull a, a bait and switch, we can act in that capacity. But it would be very smart for us to engage the Trailways Bus Station versus some other more costly sites that need, you know, uh, that, that, that have higher price tags with what would be their, their reclamation.
Councilwoman Smith Lee, you have a follow-up question?
I'm, I'm, I'm still, the, the cycle, you're saying the cycle of the grant money, right?
Yes, this is, this is?
It's, it's in this cycle right now?
This is a one-year thing that was just announced in December.
So, it's never gonna happen again?
We're not sure.
Okay.
We're not sure at all.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Yes. Although I, as though I see this as a viable, um, entity, I guess my biggest problem with that is, why do we continue to think so small about certain things here in Petersburg? To me, the Trailway Bus Station at full capacity could probably only hold about twenty, twenty-five people.
No, no.
Hold on. Once you filled up that with artifacts or whatever, you're not gonna have many people in there. And I'm just going by my thought process as working in the National Gallery of Arts for four years in DC. We, well, let's go back to DC. DC, right now, the African-American museum, if you don't book this week, you can't get in there this summer. So, if we're gonna be interested in a facilities, I would like to see a facility that can take on some of that capacity. I've had an interest in, uh, this type of, uh, entertainment or facilities, but at the same time, we have to look at the bigger side of things sometimes. Um, Trailways is, it holds it. Um, but I didn't think it made sense years ago when it was presented to become a museum. Um, I think that if you do it now realistically, you'll, you'll put money into it to have lines around a block, which doesn't look bad. But how much stuff can you put in there? What can you do to this thing to say, "Hey, this is really a museum," other than?
It's not our intent for it to be a museum at all. Uh, this is a, a visitor's center that allows for walking tours and the city to, to be exposed in other capacities. We're, we're not, we're, we have no intent to, to turn the Trailways Bus Station into a museum.
Okay, I mean, I'm just saying it in the sense of what is happening in today's time and with the museum two hours away that, you know, we, we talked about this being... The motion was not about being a tour facility. I understand the email that you sent. The motion itself talked about the Trailway Station along with other city properties. And maybe that wasn't clear because that was my next point, was to have the motion restated 'cause maybe I didn't hear something right in there. Because as, the motion was to say, Trailways and other buildings, um, as opposed to just the Trailway building being used pretty much as collateral. Um, so, maybe if I can hear the motion again, I have a better understanding of it. But also, once again, I'd still say that we have to start thinking big. We get little money because we do little things. We only get big money when we start doing big things.
Well, there are some, uh, I would, I would offer to Councilwoman Wilson Smith that if she were to restate the motion, uh, that it be limited to, uh, the Trailways Bus Station for the purpose of a visitor's center on a temporary basis relative to the letter of intent to be submitted to the National Trust. letter of intent to be submitted to the National Trust. Uh, there is, there has been, there, there's never, it's never been the intent of the task force to turn the Trailways Bus Station into a museum. Uh, I do agree with you that that square footage relative the artifacts that the city does have, the collections that the city does have, it is not enough space.
Okay.
And I, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bees. Um, at this time, uh, Councilwoman Wilson Smith, can you restate your motion for Vice Mayor Hart at this time?
I will. Do I need to officially take my motion back first?
Um, I, no, you don't.
Okay, all right. Um, I would like to make a motion that this city council grant to the Preservation Task Force the authority to apply for the grant and on contingent basis of using the Trailways Bus Station.
Okay. And if there isn't any more questions, uh, there is a second by Councilwoman Smithley. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
I'm not, let me get some clarification if I may. What, what, if this motion passes, what action are we directing the city administration to take?
Councilwoman Wilson Smith, can you clarify that to Councilman Cuthbert?
If this motion passes, we are, um, supporting the idea and giving the blessing to the task force and to the city administration that this council is in support of them applying for the grant.
So, the clerk of council then would furnish the Petersburg Preservation Task Force with a letter signed by the mayor stating that the city is in favor of something or other?
Not at this time.
No?
Not at this time. This is simply permission to submit a letter of intent. We are not asking for any documentation relative permission. Now, we would love to revisit this if our letter of intent is accepted by the National Trust.
Will, if the motion passes, will the application reference council's action tonight?
No. The application will not be submitted until March.
Well, there's something that's gotta be submitted before the end of the month.
The letter of intent to the National Trust.
Okay, okay. So, will the letter of intent say anything about council's action tonight?
No, it does not have to, technically, under the, the rules and the directions of, of this grant.
So, what difference does it make whether this motion passes or fails?
Uh, we would like to act in good faith with the city rather than to act as though we are moving, uh, on our own accord.
Okay. What, what does the city manager think about all of this?
City manager's not in favor of moving forward with this at this time.
Tell me that again. The city manager is not favorable?
No, sir. I think that we just paid $200,000 to buy this building back and we need to talk to planning and our staff to figure out what we wanna do long range with this building. If it's gonna be, I'm not saying that we don't wanna have it as a visitor's center, but I don't think making a decision at this point in time and at this late hour is, is the wise decision.
Thank you very much. I'm ready to vote.
All right.
And thank you for your, all the way around. I vote no, in light of the city manager's comments.
Councilmember Smithley?
No.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
No.
Councilmember Hill?
No.
Vice Mayor Hart?
No.
Mayor Per?
No. Thank you for your time.
Motion does not pass.
Um, I have a couple of items. One is to, um, make a motion that we add to our agenda, and I know we just went through this, but if we're gonna do the positive Petersburg story, should that not be in our agenda, on our agenda for the, um, council meetings?
Um, Councilman Hill, yeah? I would think that the mayor would have certain prerogatives as him being the mayor. I mean, that it, he's a presiding officer, so I would, I mean, and that's, if we have to, I guess so, but I see no problem in the way that we're doing it now. I mean, the mayor should have some prerogatives as mayor if he just wanna stick in a positive Petersburg moment. Maybe one, one meeting, he may not have anymore, so for us to put it in there, then that way, we'll be searching.
Well, it was a question. The, um, another item is the smell that we have in the city that we, the, the city dump is, is getting the blame for the brunt of the smell. But there's an additional smell. It's, and it smells a lot like gas. And if you go on 36, you start to smell one thing, but as you go further up, it's not the same smell, which makes me think that something else is going on that's not just the dump. I mean, the citizens are blaming the dump because the dump is right there. But there's an additional smell. I'm not sure where it comes from. Now, I learned tonight that there's the, was the incinerator, the, the incinerator that caught on fire, they now have something else there. Could that be the possibility of that gaseous smell? And if it is, then should we call, um, health department or somebody? Citizens are saying that they get sick. They smell it and they get very, very sick. It's a sickening smell. And if you're riding there, you actually have to roll your windows up and you can still smell it. So, I am asking, um, administration to look into this. I, I did read in the paper where CFS did go to Colonial Heights Council Meeting, um, in reference to the smell coming from them. Um, they've not been to us council meeting about the smell. We did, um, I did sit down with Ms. Peters and then, and we talked a little bit about it. So, we do know that they are trying to control it, but it's something else going on that's hard to identify. And we need to identify it and we need to be sure that the citizens are safe, um, health-wise from whatever it is. So, if we could look into that, I would appreciate it. And I wanted to ask, have we made decisions about the BML Conference in March? It's March 11th through 14th. It's open up to council members.
National League of Cities.
So, we know who's going? Huh? I'm sorry. Yeah. National League of Cities?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hart?
I do have a question about that because I know we put into place, um, a couple years ago that if you were up for election that you... Did we not? Oh, okay. All right, then.
Yeah, so, yeah, that if...
Wilson Smith, um, brought to council and council did pass it.
It's, it, the policy stated that, um, we would always leave a forum here. We would always have five council members still present in the state, that if the mayor went, the vice mayor couldn't go. So, one of you would always be here as the head of that forum. And that new members who, who were just voted into council, which, and this time, it would be Cuthbert and, and Ms. Smith Lee, that they would be eligible to go because they're new. That's what the policy says.
I thought part of it, and maybe I'm wrong, um, I thought part of it was if you was within your last year or you was coming up for reelection that you could not attend.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, all right.
All right. So, we need to make, um, um, make preparations for Councilwoman Smithley and, and Councilman Cuthbert to go to NLC. You do have the funds for that, right? I mean, I have to do that. That's got to be... Yeah. Councilman?
Are you going, uh, who's going and who's not going? I mean, are you going, uh, Smithley? And are you going?
I'm, I'm afraid I can't go.
Yeah. And what's the date?
July 4th.
And it's?
July 4th.
Sunday through?
When is it?
Where is it?
Yeah. Same place where we would ask.
I'll be going.
Okay.
If, if, uh, Councilman Cuthbert not going.
Is he going, Smithley, and he goes, Mr. Per or Mr. Hart?
I thought the motion raised that, that, that's, that's what the motion excluded us.
No, it didn't. It said that this is your last year, meaning you're not gonna run anymore. That's what that means. If you're not gonna run for council anymore, then there's no need for the city spending any money on the city training.
Oh, absolutely right. Okay. All right, now. Yes, um, Ms. Benavides?
Just as a, a reminder to council, one of the, uh, things that the state put in line is funding to support council training. Uh, this conference is the actual, not the National League, it's the conference, it's the congressional, it's the lobbying opportunity. And this is where we would also, they schedule meetings with your congressional representatives and briefing on what's happening on the federal level. And so, from a training standpoint, there are a couple of different opportunities available, but more so, it's really talking about the federal agenda, which we talked about, like the tax credits and things that we want to see there. Uh, so, we will work with staff on that, but I just wanna remind you that that was one of the things that the state was very interested in seeing is the council to participate in more trainings, and that's why they have funded this activity.
So, Mr.?
Yes, Councilman?
So, with that being said, um, I think this is something, we made that decision under a lot of duress at that time, which I didn't think, I think I voted against it. And some of you are running on council at the time. We was trying to save money every way, everywhere we could. Of course, physically, we're a little bit better than what we were then financially. I don't think it's a good idea for us to split hairs like the way we have been. So, it's something, um, Mr. Preston, um, how do we change that motion? Uh, because that's part of rules of council, right? At this point, is it? Is it part of the way, the way that we go to conferences? Is that part of rules of?
This is a, I can't remember whether it's an order or a resolution, but it was something that was put on the table, um, brought by Councilwoman Wilson Smith, that it was approved. And it's a guideline to follow for all conferences that council members go to.
Okay. Um, I'd like to direct the, uh, the city attorney to look into that to see what, what would be the proper way for us to undo it because, um, if nothing else, if nothing else, this, this council needs a, a, a lot of training. And for those of us who do wanna go, uh, I think should be able to go if the funds are there. So, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Preston?
Council acts through their ordinances and resolutions. It's a matter of you guys motioning to vote to change, if you guys wanna change that.
Well, with that being said, uh, I'd like to make the mo, where I move that council, all those persons who would like to go to the, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'd like to have a, a motion to appeal that all those council persons who would like to attend the conferences, the National League of Cities and upcoming conferences, that their schedules would allow and that, that, that our finances, as far as the council budget would allow, be allowed to go. That's my motion.
Councilman Myers?
Sir?
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithley?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
No.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Per?
Aye.
Motion's passed.
That's all I have for tonight.
Councilwoman Smithley?
Happy New Year, everyone. And I just want, um, you all to be safe tomorrow. You know, we're supposed to be getting some bad weather. And, um, I just hope that all of us stay safe and warm. And I want to, um, thank everybody for serving on MLK Day of Service. It was a, an awesome day. Um, had an awesome speaker to come in from the Tidewater area at Tabernacle. And then, I want to thank the City of Petersburg Ambassador Program for putting on an excellent event, um, with the youth and the seniors. It was just so overwhelming because the youth, um, helped the seniors with bingo. And these are young people who truly feels like they entitled to everything, but they made a decision to come to this event and learn some things. They learned some things about resume building, how to, how to interview on a, um, have a job interview, how to, how to tie and tie, how to support your teammate or your fellow worker. But I do wanna give special thanks to Tammy Urby, Donetta Tice, Ann Taylor, Darren Hill, Mayor Per, Margot Harper, for just being there and, um, supporting the city. 'Cause I see that we're going in a, a positive direction because the, our future is our children. So, I, I truly want to thank you all for putting that event on, and I know we got more to come. I, I truly agree with, um, Treska Wilson Smith. We do try, we do need to make, um, a decision on the retreat. And it should be done as, as soon as possible to make, you know, maybe we'll do like a, a Saturday and a Sunday. But in order for us to, to stay in tune and, and resolve some of the issues that we need to work on, we do need a retreat. Also, I would like to move that we authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for the sale of the addressed property located at 1015 Commerce Street, formerly the Tipton Building, and accept the LOI as submitted.
Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Second.
Any questions for members of council? Councilman Cuthbert?
What are the terms of the LOI?
Uh, the terms of LOI is, okay.
Go on, Reggie.
Is Reggie, Reggie here?
Right.
Reggie's gone. Okay.
Counselor, all the council received a call?
Which, Reggie, which account is?
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council, good evening. And I'm sorry, um, your question?
Charlie, um, Council, um, man, Charlie Cuthbert wanted to know the information on the LOI. For the Tipton Building, the Tipton's property. For the Tipton's Building, the Tipton's Property.
Uh, okay. I, I, I do, I do, I do. Um, okay, so, uh, let's see. We have, um, the proposed transaction is between Mission Bay Investments LLC and Orasigns and the City of Petersburg. And it is for the property at one zero zero four and ten fifteen Commerce Street. Uh, the, we can, we can disclose. It's, it's okay to disclose, Tom. It's okay to disclose the terms? Okay, great. Oh. Oh, okay, uh, let's. Okay.
Ms. Benavides?
I'm coming. Uh, I'll read as much as possible. Uh, this letter outlines a proposed transaction between Mission Bay Investments LLC and a science purchaser of the City of Virginia encompassing all land improvements described below and the terms which are intended. Uh, the property parcel, as was mentioned, uh, with improvements is located at ten oh four and ten fifteen. Uh, they have offered a purchase price which each council member received a copy of electronically. Uh, all to be paid upon, in cash upon settlement, subject to the purchaser securing financing and market terms and conditions. Upon ratification of the agreement, the purchaser, uh, will provide the city with earnest money to be held by the purchaser's attorney until settlement. Uh, the purchase price in return to the purchaser, if the title of property is not marketable and contingent on satisfaction. All deposits will be deposited according to, and they gave the terms of the payment. Purchaser have, uh, one hundred and twenty days after the zoning approval by the City of Petersburg to allow for the, uh, use of a low income tax credit. Uh, the inspection period to conduct a purchaser's expense, whatever reasonable investigation, analysis, and studies of the property that purchaser shall deem appropriate. Within five days after the full execution of the agreement, the seller shall deliver the purchaser copies of all the information. Uh, let's see, uh, and then it talks about settlement, settle, agrees to go into settlement on it. Uh, the, there are at least, there are contingencies tied to the settlement. Purchaser securing one or two parts approval from the National Park Service and the Department of Historical Resources for the building qualifying for the historic tax credit for rehabilitation of the building. Purchaser securing financing with the terms acceptable to the purchaser. Purchaser securing zoning approval to develop up to two hundred and twenty apartment units and up to ten thousand square foot of commercial space and with acceptable terms to the purchaser. Zoning approval of the City of Petersburg to allow for the low income housing tax credit. And purchasing, purchaser secures approval, uh, of six million in tax abatements for, uh, the property listed in. And so this is what was sent to us, uh, I believe we received it Friday via email, uh, which our councilwoman's speaking on. Uh, we did have, I believe, a public hearing earlier on the disposition of this property, so we actually had that. So, uh, I believe that one of the conditions was to bring back any type of offers to council.
I didn't hear what the purchase price was, and I didn't hear what the, um, residential, uh, proposed residential mix was. Uh, how much of the, what was it, two hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet of residential is proposed to be low income? That is, how many units?
Uh, two hundred and twenty units.
Two hundred and twenty low income units? Is, is, did I hear that right?
It's to do.
What was the question, sir?
How many, how many units?
Uh, I don't have a project plan as far as the, I have not received any of that. All I received was the offer, and the offer price is one point five million dollars.
All right, and what is the apartment mix? It's, it's two hundred and twenty apartments?
Yes, we haven't, I have not received a development plan or anything, so that's part of the contingent, is that this still must go through zoning and planning. So they're making an offer, and this is what they're proposing to do. However, they have not received approval, and because this is a, it's usually a competitive process, they still have to receive a number of approvals in order to do the next phase of it. So I will let Michelle, as she may have more information on the project itself.
It's coming back to council, because part of that zone, it will come back to council, because a part of that is the contingency when they said that they would get rezoning. So it's two twenty, that's the number of the units, it's one hundred percent LITAC, and will come back to you all for approval.
So not one apartment will be market rate out of two hundred and twenty?
Ten thousand square feet of commercial and at the proposal of the LOI, yes, no, sir, not one.
And what are the, what are the, uh, how many bedrooms?
That breakdown will be given to you at the time, that's not what you normally would get when you do your LOI. That breakdown will be given to you at the time that they're requesting the rezoning.
Well, but that makes a huge amount of difference in terms of the consequence long term to the city. Are these one bedroom apartments, or are these three bedroom apartments, or is it a mix? Do we have that information?
No, sir.
Well, how, how can we make an intelligent decision without knowing how many, I mean, there's a huge difference between a three bedroom and a one bedroom?
So at this point, Councilman Cuthbert, what they're asking, no one is, is go, no one is going to expend those funds to come back and have nice full-blown plans if you haven't given them the authorization to move forward. So they're asking that you would set, accept their letter of intent to move forward, to come back to you for the rezoning of the property. And at that time, you voted up or you voted down?
Well, but we ought to know the parameters of what they're thinking. I'm not asking for construction plans.
So they're thinking two hundred and twenty LITAC units, ten thousand square feet commercial?
Well, yes, but that's, that doesn't allow us to, to think long term and, and envision what the consequences are economically to the city. If these are two bedroom apartments, that means that we, it's, it's, we're talking about school age children potentially. Uh, if every one of these, uh, two hundred and twenty units has one child, uh, to educate, that we bring in from Chesterfield or Colonial Heights or Dinwiddie or Prince George or Prince Edward or somewhere else, uh, there's a huge consequence economically long term. We need to know what the bedrooms are. What the bedroom mix is. Is it single family, is it two, sorry, is it single bedroom, is it two bedrooms, is it three bedrooms? We just don't know, is that correct?
Not at this time.
Correct.
At this, at this point in time, it's a concept, uh, they have not, uh, also, one of the components of LITAC is that they have different income levels. Uh, what they would do is we, if once, if we agree to sell this property, they will then come back to this body with a development plan and proposal, which would give you another opportunity to review it and also to start to negotiate. So for example, they are proposing at this time a hundred percent LITAC. If that's something council is not in favor of, you'll have an opportunity at that time to, uh, work with staff and staff work with the Economic Development Committee to talk about the development and to discuss it again. So this will come back to council more, at least, at least twice.
Well, but we're painting ourselves in a corner.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, Councilman Cuthbert?
All right, I want to hand out to council, uh... Well, this is discussion, thank you. What you have before you are two pages, uh, each contains a table. And the first is a table of median household income in Petersburg. And you will see that Petersburg is the, at the bottom of the barrel in terms of area median household income. State of Virginia is more than, median household income is more than twice Petersburg. Chesterfield County is more than that. Uh, Prince George is approximately twice Petersburg. Dinwiddie and Colonial Heights are a little bit, uh, less than twice. And I wrote out here, the takeaway from this table, and I don't like this news, okay? I really don't like this news. So do not, please do not shoot the messenger. But we need to see what our real world is, and it's not just warm and fuzzy. We have a sick city. It is a slum in large part. We love it, but it is a slum in large part. We need to take off our blinders and see that. We all travel around and we see neighboring jurisdictions that are beautiful places. And we come back to Petersburg and we embrace it and we love it, but it is a slum in large part. And it is because in part of decisions made by city council, including decisions like the one we have before us tonight. The takeaway from this first table is that Petersburg residents are already woefully below their peers in terms of disposable income. Now, why do we care? Well, we care because the consequence of that is an anemic retail economy. Retailers go where the money is. And I don't like it. I wish those weren't the rules of the real world. But that's still, that's why we don't have a first-class grocery store. That's why we don't have, in downtown at least, a first-class drugstore. Uh, it's because the money is not there. There, we need to think in terms of raising, not lowering, the median household income. Now, let's go to the second table. Uh, this is a table of low-income rental housing in Petersburg. And as you see, Petersburg already has thirty-five percent of its units are being government subsidized. Thirty-five percent, okay? The low-income tax credit, which is what we're talking about here, is twenty-three percent of the dwelling units in Petersburg. We're talking about adding apparently two hundred and twenty more to the thirteen eighty-five that we've already got. Then public housing, another seven hundred and twenty-eight units. You add those two units, uh, numbers of units together, and you're at thirty-five percent. The takeaway from this table is that with thirty-five percent of all dwelling units being government subsidized, low-income units, Petersburg is now super saturated with low-income housing. And a municipality cannot generate essential revenues on an annually recurring basis without residents who can afford to pay substantial taxes. Again, I don't like the rules of economics, but those are the rules. The watchword is balance. We've got to have a balance across the income spectrum, and we don't have it, we're out of balance. Does anyone know of a successful municipality whose business plan is to embrace as much low-income housing as it possibly can? Does anyone know of that? Mr. Rossman says he does.
I, 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 I visit.
Councilwoman Wilson, Councilwoman Smithley?
Yes. When, last year, I went to Richmond with the developer, with the same plan. Went there, the, uh, the apartments were evacuated. The, the medium for those individuals to live in those apartments were twenty, you had to make at least twenty-nine thousand dollars. And we have so many people in the City of Petersburg that are living in slums. Houses that don't have run, running water, no heat. I had a young, I had a call just, um, last week. An elderly lady who is ninety-eight years old and lived off a high street that did not have any heat. And the surrounding churches had to make sure that she have heat. So you rather for somebody to live like that than get something decent? To pay their own water bill? This is gonna be something that's gonna benefit the whole city? A hundred and twenty, a hun, two hundred and twenty units, and everybody gonna be paying their water bill? Electric bill? This is not free. We live in a economic depressed city. Everybody don't have, they have the has and the have-nots. But if we want our citizens to come up to the age that it's supposed to be and stop living in slums, then we need to help them.
That's right.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to that. I think people will still be living in slums after we pass this, if we pass this. We've already got thirty-five percent of the units in Petersburg are low income. It's not that the opportunities to rent low-income apartments are not here, they are here.
Mr. Cuthbert, you, do you have, you, you own property, is that correct?
I do.
Okay, and, and your people pay their rent?
And I live in Petersburg.
Right, and, 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 and you allow your people to pay their rent, right?
I certainly do.
And, and they pay their rent on time, right?
They do or they leave.
Right. And, 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 and you have a decent place for them to come to you and rent your, your, your property, correct?
That's true.
Okay.
Now, where are these people gonna come from, though? What's the, what's to keep most of them from coming from Chesterfield County or Colonial Heights or Dinwiddie or Prince George? When I was working, going, when I was going door to door, uh, a year ago, I found, I, I went to low-income, uh, subsidized housing and asked people where they came from. One lady told me, I came from Prince Edward County.
Councilman Cuthbert, we wanna stick to the motion and topic.
Okay, well, this is well-intentioned, but it's sad. It's a step in the wrong direction, and I'm voting against it. And I'm sorry that I, this is just a bad deal for Petersburg.
Councilman Myers?
You know, I find, I find it quite disgusting that here we are, we're living in a city that has an impoverished situation, and we don't want to provide decent, affordable housing for those who need it. Do you ride through your board to see how people are living? Do you go into their houses to see how they are living? Do you understand what goes on outside of your own home in these people's homes? They deserve the best that they can get. When they sweat and torn over the backs, on their backs, to pay their taxes here in the City of Petersburg, and we still provide substandard housing in substandard neighborhoods that you decide to sit here publicly, and I'm gonna say this loud publicly, to call the City of Petersburg a slum. Yet you sit on city council as a developer, and you wanna make all these accusations about the people who want to live in decent, affordable housing. You don't know if they can afford it. You don't know the lifestyle that they live. There are certain requirements. They have to meet these requirements. And so with respect to that, whether they come from Kalamazoo and, and anywhere else in this world, everybody wasn't born in Petersburg, in any city that you live in. So I love my city. I moved here from Richmond. I migrated, just like a whole lot of other folks around here. And what does having children have to do with moving to Petersburg? Period.
Well, the answer to that question is, it's the long-term consequence of the decision. Well, the answer to that question is, it's the long-term consequence of the decision that we're looking at tonight. And we've got to think long-term and not just short-term. We've got to think about what's best for the city economically, and we've lost sight of that.
And the development economically is not beneficial to the city of Petersburg who pay taxes?
There definitely are pluses-
The building isn't sitting there without receiving revenue. So how is it not economically feasible?
There definitely, Mr. Myers, Councilman Myers, there definitely are advantages to this, but there also are disadvantages. It's like almost everything in life. There are pluses and there are minuses. But we need to recognize the magnitude of the minuses. The, um, drain that this is gonna put on the, on the city in terms of city services, whether those city services are educating the children that come in from another jurisdiction. Goodness knows, we have enough problems affording, uh, being able to afford to educate those that already live here. If we bring in even more, then we, that's that much less money to spend on the kids that we already have.
I certainly don't believe that that is really your rationale. So, you know, without further ado, I think that this discussion should end, Mr. Mayor, because it, you are just digging yourself in a deeper, deeper hole. So I, I think that you should apologize for everything you've said about the city of Petersburg, because it is absolutely, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm gonna go out on a limb right here, disgusting. Disgusting. Your terminology is disgusting. Period.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Back Councilwoman Smith, the second, back Councilwoman Wilson Smith. Now, we've had discussion. Madam Clerk, call for room.
Councilmember Cuthbert?
No.
Councilmember Smith Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Pern?
Aye.
That motion has passed. That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Myers?
Uh, yes, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to put an additional motion on the floor. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, and, um, Madam City Clerk, if you'd like to pass this. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I move that we adopt the presented resolution as submitted regarding the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds for the acquisition, construction, renovation, rehabilitation, and equipping of the approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-two-unit Petersburg art space, artist space apartments, multifamily housing facility located in the city of Petersburg, Virginia, at one-hundred, one-hundred-and-ten and one-twenty South Perry Street by one-ten South Perry, Illinois.
Councilmember Cuthbert? Um, where are we procedurally? Has there been a second to that motion?
Second to, uh, Vice Mayor Hart.
Let's have some discussion on this, please. I'm handed to council something I printed out from the internet. Frequently asked questions dealing with Art Space 101. Now, the last I heard about this project, it was forty-six units. It's now two-hundred-and-twenty-two units? So, but let me let you look at the frequently asked questions first. And page two, I put a magic marker around what I think is probably, what, a question that is worth our attention. The question is, do you have to be an artist to live in an art space, live-work project? You, you might think so, since it's called art space, right? Well, the answer is no. Anyone who qualifies for affordable housing may apply for residency in an art space project. Now, you don't have to have a job in order to have, to qualify for affordable housing. You just gotta be able to pay the rent. But we give preference to those applicants who participate in and are committed to the arts. Applicants need not derive their income from their art. And then the next question, I didn't put a bracket around this one, but how does art space determine who is an artist? We define the term artist broadly to comprise a wide variety of creative pursuits, including traditional art forms, and those as diverse as clothing design, weaving, and even canoe-making. A community-based selection committee interviews all applicants. The committee looks for evidence that applicants are seriously committed to their art and that they will be mindful and positive contributors to the building and community. The application and qualification process does not include judgment of the quality of work. Well, basically what this is, is another two-hundred-and-twenty units of low-income housing. We just, uh, indicated that we were accepting a letter of intent for two-hundred-and-twenty units, and now here are another two-hundred-and-twenty units come along. Is this all that Petersburg has in its future, is more low-income housing? Apparently the answer to that is yes. But look at the numbers. Look at what, let's go back to the table. We are talking about adding, uh, we did have thirteen-hundred-and-eighty-five low-income tax credit units in Petersburg before tonight. We're adding to that another four-hundred-and-forty? Uh, I mean, i, is there ever a limit? Is there ever a limit to what is good for Petersburg in terms of low-income housing? And if so, where is that limit? Don't we need to answer that question before we make these decisions? Don't we need to decide what is our target limit? If we're really gonna be thinking in terms of long-term consequences and what's best economically for the city, don't we have to think in terms of what our goal should be in terms of low-income apartment mix? Or is a hundred percent acceptable? I think a hundred percent is not acceptable. So, um, I, I think this is a move in the wrong direction, and I vote no.
Councilmember Smith Lee?
Um, oh, uh, we both, oh, we both.
Aye, thank you. Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Pern?
Aye.
Motion's passed. You have any more items? Councilmember Myers?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Hill?
Good evening, everyone. I have a motion too. No, I'm just, I'm just joking. No, first of all, uh, I'd like to thank all our staff for their hard work. Uh, I see, uh, our Public Works Director, she's just left, but, uh, before, even before the fire, uh, all of our Public Works workers and the guys who work over there in water. We've had over, more than twenty, uh, water breaks. Uh, I see Ms., uh, Sinclair in the back. So, uh, they've been working tirelessly over the last two, two-and-a-half weeks because of the cold and the snow and all of that, and I just wanna thank them. Yesterday, uh, I guess around about eight or nine, uh, my water was off, I turned off. So, you know, when you live in a city, everything, uh, you get affected, uh, because there was a water break right behind my house, and they took, they took care of it. Uh, constituents of mine called me, asked me what's going on with the water, and, uh, I, actually I called it in because it was a wet spot going across the street, but we couldn't see the water dusting up, coming up out of the ground, but it was just wet. In the event, it was a, a water break, and, uh, they fixed it, and the water was off for, for like an hour. And I know in some other areas, they were off for longer, but, uh, I really wanna commend that department for all the hard work which they, they are doing and have done. I wanna commend the, uh, Fire Department, the Police Department, our city manager, her staff, for all the hard work that they've been doing, uh, especially today, you know, you know. One of the great things about being a director in this city and being a city manager in this city, you know, she's, she's displaced today. You can't tell, but she can't go to her, her home today. But she's up in here with us, like many others, uh, and, uh, you do have somewhere to stay, don't you? Uh, I, I guess she, she rented a, a, a hotel or something, so, you know, we, and we try to keep our comments, uh, short as possible, but, you know, I guess we, we have a lot to discuss. So I'd like to thank our, uh, our departments and all in which they've done. Also wanna, uh, thank those who was with me on the ride-along on last Wednesday. It was a good, uh, ride. We rode through my ward in the trolley, and, uh, I know some of the other council members, they have theirs coming up, but mine was on last Wednesday, and all of the department heads was on the trolley, most of them, and I were telling, was telling them about the different things in, in our ward, and it was very enlightening to them, 'cause some of them are not from here, some are, and they really, uh, we were really engaged, and it was a good way for us to get to know one, one another, other than just, uh, like this, uh, in a meeting. So I wanna thank them for also coming out. And, uh, just wanna thank the, the council and the, the staff again, because people on the outside, they've been looking at us, they've been doing a lot of write-ups in the Richmond Time Dispatch, talking about the comeback of Petersburg, and it's amazing how people on the outside can see that we're doing well, but, you know, other people who are right here in the mix of it, you know, they kinda see things being, uh, uh, bleak. But, uh, we, we're, we're making great strides and, and heading in the right direction, I believe. I know some of the things that we do, uh, don't always sit well with everyone, but I, I believe, uh, give us a year or two, and I, I, I think things, this would just be just a memory, uh, from today. We are headed in the right direction. Also, I'd like to thank, uh, those people who volunteered on yesterday. Uh, Ms., uh, Smith Lee, she already announced all the names that were there. I'd like to thank our deputy city manager for being there as well, and, uh, Ms., uh, Collection, no, not just, no, straight ahead. Denise, yeah. I'd like to thank her also, she was there. Uh, I'd like to thank her for being there and just, uh, fellowship and, and things like that. Something, we missed an opportunity, and this'll be my last statement. We had an opportunity over a month ago for our homeless shelter, you know, that the Salvation Army, uh, they closed their doors. They had roughly from thirty to thirty-five beds waiting for us in Richmond. I got a disturbing call from the mayor on yesterday saying that the, the church, I believe it is, the lady who was running the shelter, because all the churches were supposed to come together and, you know, band together, and, and, and we didn't want the shelter to leave and, and everybody, and they had good intentions. Well, what is happening now, the, the, the lady who's in there, she's kinda being overworked, and I guess she's kinda there by herself on what I'm getting. But now, those beds that we had in Richmond, I believe they're gone now. So this council, we have to make sometimes this tough decision by making the right decision at that time. If we had made that decision back when, when they came to us and told us that they were gonna close our Salvation Army down and went ahead and transported those people who were, uh, homeless at the time, we wouldn't be faced with this right now. So she's calling the mayor now and other members of staff, seeing what we can do when we already had a contingency plan already up front. So we gotta be very careful and very deliberately, and, uh, I'll take one of, uh, Councilman Cuthbert's quotes, and we gotta take our emotions out of it. You know, it's kinda hard to do that, but, you know, and sometimes we just gotta do the right thing. And, uh, and that's something we should've done. We should've just went ahead and got our bus, because they had beds up there for them. But now, we're stuck with maybe having some people out in the cold because of that. Now, you know we're not gonna send them out in the cold, but with that being said, is I don't know if the, all the churches, they stepped up today, but it's an ongoing process. So it's hard, you can, you can come up for a day or for a week. It's hard to come up for three or four months. So I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and, uh, those are my comments.
Yes, um, Happy New Year, everyone, and thank you for coming out for today's meeting. Um, I just wanna thank all of the staff that, um, participated, um, in today's, um, catastrophe, I, I would say. You guys really truly worked hard, came together, not only just here in Petersburg, uh, but we had surrounding areas to come out and, um, show their support, and the teamwork was just great. Moved on from there, went to the warming center, everybody was in place and moved around swiftly. So, um, I just wanna thank those departments for that also. Ms., Sheriff Benavita, hey, you're wrong. I just wanna say that you are. And that just isn't from council and coworkers. A lot of individuals this morning, as I sat out with you, they just had great things to say about you and chief, and, um, you know, nobody was really mad about anything. They just looked at it as stuff happens, but they were just proud to see you out there. And one of their biggest comments about the two of you were, "I see them everywhere." And, uh, to me, I think that's a, a good comment to make about your police chief and your city manager. Words that just can't be, um, expressed enough, and, um, we all thank you for, um, deciding to come here to Petersburg. Also, it's, you know, at times, we, we may not agree with everything, um, here on council, but I feel that we're starting to move some things forward and get things together. Um, our understandings, our backgrounds, and, you know, other diverse situations may make us a little different, but, you know, overall, we're all here trying to do the best that we can for the city. Sometimes it may not look like it, but, you know, I think it's the heart and the passion that gets in it. Um, so not all the times you're gonna be able to take emotion out of it, and it's not a knock on what you say, but sometimes you have to think about the person that just called you earlier today and said, "Hey, um, I don't have anything to eat," or, "Hey, my half-million-dollar house caught on fire." You know, so we have, we have those situations here in Petersburg. We're all, you know, trying to do the best that we can to move things forward, and, um, you know, I, I just hope that 2018 just becomes better for us, um, as we move forward, get the trainings that we need, do the things that we need to move forward, and just, um, decide what it is that we're gonna be as Petersburg. I think we're moving in the right directions. Money's coming in. I mean, I have to agree that maybe not all money is good money, but at the same time, you know, we're starting to make those provisions, so, um, let's continue to do the things that make Petersburg better, and, um, hopefully one day, you know, we can look around and see that our median incomes are going up as we try to bring in business. I don't have anything with, you know, continuously building houses, but where are all these people gonna work at once they move here? So, you know, I think the Economic Development Department, Department is moving up and doing things, so with us all working together, we can make it. And one last thing, um, I still, no, no motion. I still, uh, would like to see us have a citywide meeting with all departments, employees, um, and along with council, just to sit down and say, "Hey, you know, not only what can you do for us as workers, but what can we do?" do for us as workers, but what can we do for you? And have those conversations moving forward, because I've always learned that your best idea can sometimes come from the janitor. Your worst idea can come from the guy that has doctor in front of his name. So let's think about that, talk with the employees. Many have been here for years for a reason, and that's probably because they're good workers. So thank you. And that's all I have.
Mayor Purn?
Good evening again. It's been a very emotional day, and I just want to, I can't applaud enough. It's been a Vita's, we're running on adrenaline right now, because I know she's physically and mentally exhausted, and thank you for hanging in there with us, and we appreciate it. And along with the staff, everyone that's been out there today working, we so graciously appreciate what you do on sleep or no sleep here in the city of Petersburg. So anyway, on that note, I just want to let everyone know that the Argley is taking donations for victims of the fire. They have a drop-off center. And also, I know we talk a lot about the firemen enduring the elements, but I also want to give a shout-out to Tangela and Public Works, because they've been in these elements. It's been frigid.
He told me to tell you guys she's out preparing for the snow.
Right, right. I know she's preparing, so I know she hasn't gotten any sleep this year, I would think. So since, everything's been freezing, she's been managing to keep us up and running and functioning, and we appreciate her for that. So it needs to say, I'm not going to keep Miss Benavita away from her bed, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next item, item 13, item removed, agenda, no items. Item 14, unfinished business, consideration of an ordinance approving the proposed amendments to the Central Business District Enterprise Zone map and initiatives. The city of Petersburg Central Business District Enterprise Zone totaling 922 acres was applied for and approved by the Commonwealth of Virginia in 2005, city of Petersburg. The zone expired in 2014 and was reauthorized for additional 10 years to 2024. Non-taxable properties, including properties used for public use and properties owned by government or tax-exempt organizations, are not eligible for zone initiative. The size of the zone is restricted to not more than 10% of the total acreage of the jurisdiction. Therefore, to maximize the availability and use of incentives, the proposed amendments remove properties not eligible for incentives, and the boundaries are amended to include additional properties that would be eligible for incentives. The purpose of the program is to incentivize the development or redevelopment of underperforming or vacant property. Current incentives include Architectural Design Assistance Grant Program, Building and Land Disturbance Permit and Zoning Fee Waivers, Discounted Land Buy Down, Vacay Improvement Grants, Machinery and Tools Tax Grant, Partial Real Estate Tax Exemption, Water and Sewer Connection Fee Reduction, Water and Sewer Permit Fee Waivers. The recommendation is that staff recommends the city council adopts the ordinance, which includes the proposed amendments to the map and incentives of the Central Business District Enterprise Zone.
Councilman Myers? Councilman Hill?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Being that this is an ordinance, I open the floor for public discussion. Seeing no hands, the public comments is closed. Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers? Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Purn?
Aye.
That motion passed. The next item, new business, consideration of a resolution in support of legislation being introduced by the Honorable Delegate Will Morfield regarding income tax modification for certain companies, subtraction for employees and local grants. The city of Petersburg was awarded a grant from the Cameron Foundation, oh, I'm sorry, hold on, wrong one.
City of Petersburg is identified.
The city of Petersburg is identified as an eligible locality in a proposed legislation and eligible for this income tax modification because the eligible localities have been observed to have unemployment rates, poverty rates, and rates of population loss that exceed the state averages. It is recommendation that city council approve the attached resolution in support of the legislation being introduced by the Honorable Delegate Will Morfield.
Councilman Hill?
So moved.
Councilman Myers?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Being that it's a resolution, I open the floor for public comments. Seeing no hands, public comments is closed. Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Purn?
Aye.
That motion passed. Item 15B, consideration of an appropriation from the Cameron Foundation for the Jared House. The city of Petersburg was awarded a grant from the Cameron Foundation in the amount of $81,060 in order to fund the stabilization of the Jared House, 808 to 810 Logan Street. Currently, the city is completing a historic structures report for the Jared House, which will guide the appropriate rehabilitation of the building. The grant money will go toward the construction cost to stabilize the structure. The recommendation is that city council approve the appropriation so they can move forward with the project.
Councilman Cuthbert?
I move that we approve the appropriation.
Councilman Myers?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to open the floor for public comments. Are there any public comments? Seeing no hands, public comments closed. Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Purn?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Item 16, responses to previous public information period, Ms. Harris.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I have the responses to the public information questions from the last council meeting. What is happening with the public access station, Channel 15, and can it be updated? The city is currently assessing software options for the management of public access channel as well as funding that can be provided for those updates. Where is the check register on the city's website? If not, then why not? The city's check register is not currently listed on the website. This requires a unique software that the city has not yet obtained. Where is the green box containing information from 1830 to 1862? There are approximately 40 to 50 green boxes containing information dating back to the 1700s. The information in these boxes has been inventoried by the Library of Virginia. While the contents of these boxes can be preserved, the Library of Virginia preserves them, if the Library of Virginia preserves them, they will become the property of the library. The boxes are being securely stored in a vault at the Petersburg City Hall. The Library of Virginia confirms that this is the safest place for these documents to be stored in the city. Several options are being reviewed that will allow the city to preserve these documents and also retain the custody of these valuable assets.
Thank you.
Can somebody get that information to Brandon Garden? I know he's been asking about that information for like two or three years. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilman Cuthbert?
I ask that this item about the green boxes and giving this to the Library of Virginia be put on our agenda for our next meeting. One way to do this is to give the original documents to the Library of Virginia and take back a disk-